Welcome, everyone. I now call the January 14th, 2025 Regular City Council Meeting to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. At this point, we'll take a moment to take roll calls of the council members by position number. Please say here when the city clerk calls your name.
Thank you. Councilmember Zorins?
Here.
Mayor Thompson?
Here.
Councilmember Aldrich?
Here.
Councilmember Curd?
Here.
Councilmember Manke?
Here.
Councilmember Dodd?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Al Cabra?
Here.
All present.
Thank you. Before we continue with the rest of the agenda, I'd like to reiterate some guidelines. For remote meeting attendees, please speak clearly and pause frequently. Mute your microphone when not speaking. And for council attending remotely, use the raise hand feature when you wish to speak. First up is meeting agenda approval. Are there any changes to tonight's meeting agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to public engagement opportunities. We have the Martin Luther King Jr. Day of Service. You can join our volunteer event with Whale Scout to restore habitat at the former Wayne Golf Course. That's on January 20th, 2025, from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. at the former Wayne Golf Course. You can also apply for a board or commission. You can volunteer in the community by serving on an advisory body. We have an open house on January 21st from 5:00 to 6:00 p.m., and applications are open online through February 21st. We also have a micro mobility survey, so you can help the city to develop strategies to guide planning, development, and use of micro mobility devices, and share your thoughts on bikes, e-bikes, scooters, skateboards, and more. All right, we have one proclamation tonight for Martin Luther King Jr. Day, and we have a cool special guest. We have members of the North Creek High School Black Student Union to the podium, and they are going to read the proclamation tonight, so come on up. And you'll hit the little button, so it gets read like this. Oh, Peggy's on it.
Whereas Martin Luther King Jr. Day is celebrated every third Monday in January as a time to remember and celebrate the life and legacy of Dr. Martin Luther King.
And whereas Dr. King, along with countless advocates and activists for racial and intersectional forms of justice, made significant contributions to the civil rights movement of the 1960s and the impact of the course of American history.
And whereas Martin Luther King Jr. Day is the only federal holiday designated as a national day of service meant to encourage all Americans to contribute to building a beloved community through unity, service, and transformation.
And whereas Martin Luther King Jr. Day provides the opportunity to honor Dr. King's legacy by working towards a more just and equitable society in which every community member is valued on the basis of their race, ethnicity, culture, religion, abilities, gender, sexual orientation, and socioeconomic status.
And whereas the city of Bothell is proud to offer opportunities to engage in service activities locally and provide resources to learn more about the legacy of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.
Now, therefore, I, Mason Thompson, Mayor of the city of Bothell, do hereby proclaim January 20th, 2025, as Martin Luther King Jr. Day in the city of Bothell, and encourage every one of our community members to participate in a personally meaningful service project so that we can eradicate injustice and create lasting change that will contribute to building our beloved community here in Bothell. Thank you so much. You guys have a copy of it. Would you like a picture?
Yes.
All right. I saw a real big smile.
We can come up here, and then after the photo, y'all will have time to speak.
Okay.
Did you want to say a few words to accept?
Oh, yeah, no problem. I just want to quickly thank, you know, the city of Bothell. I want to thank Gabby. They were a huge help in making everything happen. I really appreciate it. I also want to thank our advisor, Mr. Knox. I also want to thank Ms. Harv, as well as Dr. Thomas, who couldn't be here today. My teacher, Ms. Mizushima, and then Mr. McNeil. I want to thank them as well for my school. For a background, we are the executive board of our Black Student Union here at North Creek High School, and we do try to do events like this to kind of enrich our community. And when we were given this opportunity, you know, we jumped at it. You know, working with Gabby was such an honor. And one thing we're kind of talking about as well on the kind of topic of, you know, black joy was also our Juneteenth celebration, our annual Juneteenth celebration, which it's been, it would be the third year this time. Last year, we actually expanded it to the whole city, so I invite all of you guys to come out for our Juneteenth celebration, June 19th. More information will be posted at a later date, and I invite all of you guys. Thank you.
All right, next up is public comment. The city has accepted public comment in writing, as well as accepted sign-up sheets for those who wish to speak at tonight's meeting. Written comments submitted to the city clerk no later than 3:00 p.m. today were forwarded to all city council members and are part of the record. When the clerk calls your name, you'll have three minutes to speak. Please note that council will receive your input, but we do not engage in discussion of these topics, and staff will make notes of any items requiring follow-up. Now, city clerk, normally I ask if we have any sign-up, but there's enough people in the audience tonight that I sort of assume we do, so I'm going to kick it over to you.
Thank you. We do. We did also receive one written comment submitted by Pam Miller in regards to the skate park edition at Bothell Landing. We do have several folks signed up to speak. When I call your name, please come to the podium, and you'll have three minutes for, once we get through our, our sign-up list, anyone in the audience, both in-person and virtual, will have an opportunity to speak as well. First up, I have Bill Hogan.
Good to be here. I spent a 35-year career as an intercollegiate athletic director, mostly Division One, including Seattle University. I'm still wearing a red, but I retired a few years ago. And our good friend Rosemary McAuliffe grabbed me one day and said she has a project she wants me to help her with. And if you know Rosemary, you don't say no to Rosemary. She's in Porta Vaiarta right now, so I'm feeling real sorry for her. But we have a group of dedicated individuals that would like to support the skateboard project in Bothell as part of the Bothell Landing. There are a lot of benefits. I know Pam Miller here, she's, she lives in Bothell. I live in Seattle, but I've been coming over here for probably a year and a half or so and really enjoy the community. The biggest thing is trying to find activities, productive activities for our youth to be involved with, and like Seattle, or I'm from Ohio, anywhere, anywhere you've ever been, sports and activities in these individual action sports are really a lot of fun. It's a little bit different group. I was, if you want to ask me about football, basketball, baseball, I'm pretty good at that. You ask me about skateboard parks, I know nothing about skateboard parks. So I leaned on our committee members. But it's been a good experience, and we've really enjoyed a visit with Nick and Mason and others, who we all hope that everybody kind of gets engaged and supports this really worthwhile project. The best news is we've, Rosemary's son is participating in a big way financially, so we're off to a really good start in raising the money. But obviously, we would like to have this to be sort of like a destination location where people from the area make it a special park, make it a really good skateboard park so that it would increase restaurants and hotel usage over here in the east side. All right, it's about three minutes? Okay. Okay. Not a problem. But thank you for your time, and I look forward to seeing how this, how this all goes. Cheers.
Thank you. Next is Pam Miller.
And I'm still on. Where is our timer? Boom, that tells me what I'm doing here. Okay, I'm going to kind of read this here. I am Pam Miller, and I'm on that committee with Rosemary to come up with some ideas for the new skate park. I've been pursuing this since they took it down and trying to get this back on, so I'm very thankful for her efforts. I sent a letter in to the community, for the community group, and I hope that you do review that. It has links within it that I think that as you guys are considering, your recommendation back to the city would be very, very helpful. And I'm always available for answering questions. I've been advocating for skateboarding and action sports in the community for 25 years as a parent and professional skater, a community leader, YMCA program director, and consultant for action sports. I'm a nonprofit founder, worked for World Cup Skates, do tour, USA, SA, in snow sports, and I've partnered with Action Sports Industries, KRAE programs, and actions locally and nationally. Locally, I've done skate contests for Woodinville, Smamish, Mercer Island, around the community. So say I'm familiar with action sports, I am. As we look at the use for Bothell Landing, it's easy to see the need for a skate park because being part of our thing for at-risk youth is the way it usually is looked at, a handful of skaters that need a place to go. But it really hit me hard today as I was thinking about that, and even I have advocated for that group. But my experience is really quite the opposite. I find that skateboarders and action sports people would be the most intelligent, creative, resilient, determined, self-motivated people that I know, honestly, the people I like to hang out with. So skateboarders in general in action sports tend to be really overlooked. And if we look around our town, we see no skateboarding signs all over the place and skate stops on everything. But if we did the same thing to baseball, football players, soccer players, we'd have a whole lot more at-risk youth. Nowhere does it say, "Don't play baseball." And we provide places. Bothell, I was trying to look it up. I think we spent a levy of $149 million on play fields just in one year. What we need to do then is to turn that around. Kids, on the average, spend three years playing sports on a team, most quit by the time they're 11. The pay-to-play is prohibitive for most to get onto teams. Once you get into high school, you don't make the team. And the contests, I'm speaking for two groups here. Can I have an extra half a minute?
Unfortunately, no.
No. Okay. Thank you. I hope that you do read all that I submitted and really look at creating a quality park at Bothell Landing. I even gave you pictures to look at, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Pam. Next, I have Skye Selig. Sorry, y'all, I should have given more instructions to you. The light at the dice is going to turn green when your time starts, and it will start flashing with one minute left, and then it'll turn yellow with 30 seconds left.
I'll keep it brief. Hi, I'm Skye Selig. I grew up here in Bothell, spent a lot of time at the old Wooden Park and Popkin Field. I've been skating 25 years now, and yeah, it's led to a lot of opportunities. I was a professional skateboarder for many years. I was sponsored by large corporations, vans, shoes being one of them, and went on tour doing professional level competitions, helped, you know, I did like meetings with the Olympic Committee to help usher skateboarding into the Olympics. And yeah, it all started here in Bothell at that skate park, so I'd love to see that opportunity, you know, be created for the next generation. And yeah, I just, speaking isn't really much part of skateboarding, so I'm going to get out of here.
Thank you. Next is Laura Edinger.
Hi, I'm Laura. I'm a mom of four. My kids are 10, 6, 3, and 18 months, three of the four skateboard already and have a huge love for it. The reason I feel it's an importance to advocate for larger and scale-boosting skate parks is because as a kid and a teenager, I really struggled with feeling accepted. I struggled with mental health and was diagnosed with seasonal depression and ran away in the eighth grade. Although I was in organized sports and had a future in track and field, dance, and involved in church from the age of 10, I was missing a sense of belonging and community. It wasn't until our youth group partnered with an organization called BFC from Idaho the summer after I ran away, that skate demos, that did skate demos all the way down the west coast, from Mexico all the way up here to Seattle, that I met my first community of skateboarders. It was because of how nice that team was and how willing they were to teach me to skateboard and the right way, not allowing me to push Mongo, that my love of skateboarding began. Pam was a part of SAS and partnered with BFC, which had started a sector here around 2005. And having gotten involved at 14 years old, I finally felt a sense of belonging and community. I was invited to another youth group in high school where the youth pastor skateboarded and surfed, and his family ended up adopting me in. He encouraged me to a job, to apply for a job at the Muckel TO YMCA after I graduated. And as I've grown, I've spent time working in the industry at different skate, snow, and surf shops, and it has become, over the years, a stress relief, created endorphins, and became very individualistic and creative outlet for me. My husband and I now, fast forward 15 years later, are leading BFC, and our aim is to be a safe, healthy family environment, fostering an environment for kids to feel a sense of belong, the same way I did so many years ago. Currently, we live in Edmonds, and if we want to go to a larger skate park, we have to travel 30 to 60-plus minutes to get to a large one. Our kids are in school in Bothell, we shop in Bothell, and if we had a skateboard here, we would be here supporting an already amazing and thriving community. We hope to continue advocating for families and good values in our communities and help them with an outlet that is positive to their self-worth. I wanted to share that story because I find it very important that when we share our own stories, it helps with anyone else that has come from the same background. And so I hope that that is very motivating in wanting to place a skate park in this community. And speaking is also not my strong suit, so I'll lean on with that. Thank you.
Next, I have Injong Kim.
Hi. He doesn't want to talk, so I'm going to talk. Hi, I'm Injong Kim, living in 98012 Mill Creek. And then we love to go to new parks all the time, and every summer, I'm taking my son to go to skateboard park trip to California. So we hit so many different parks last year, about 40 parks. And then what I found, the quality skate park brings family together, not only the youth kid. I see there's so many moms skating, also dad involved, family involved, and then it's good for him and also good for everyone overcome their too much energy to release out. So I think quality skate park is very important. And then whenever we go to a small, very not-maintained park, sometime it become, became unpleasant, pleasant place for the youth to do fireworks, or drinking, smoking, all the things that happen. So I hope good quality park maybe bring better environment for the city or community. So we hope the Bothell, when they have a new skate park project, I hope little, big, and nice, so it brings good skaters, and then skater, like it maintains skate park better. Do you have anything to say?
I don't know.
So we'll hope the project becomes better, and then we don't need to go too far to have a good quality park. Well, Bothell's so close, so we hope have a good, nice park soon. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Donald Warren.
Well, I'm not here for the skate park, but I definitely support that. I used to skate back in the 90s quite a bit, so. My name's Donald Warren. I'm here with my wife, Sharri Warren, and together, we own and operate Bothell Chiropractic Clinic on Beardsley Boulevard, right next to the post office down the way. So I am here to talk about transportation impact fees and how they are affecting local businesses like us, and how the fees are causing downtown Bothell buildings to sit empty for years. So we know that the city is, I'm sorry, I catch my breath there. We know the city is looking into impact fees this year as part of the Bothell Development Plan, so we hope you take to heart what I have to say here. So unfortunately, after a year of working on our project, we have come to find out that the current transportation impact fees would make it impossible for us to not only move our office three blocks down the street to a long, empty building, but to open a pizza restaurant we'd been dreaming about. So let me explain that. We would like to rent and renovate the empty bank building at 10027 Main Street. So that's the building next to the old Guial del Oro Building. We would move our existing Bothell Chiropractic Clinic into the basement and open a pizza, pinball, bar, and restaurant on the main floor. What this will cost to renovate is at the, is at the limit of what we can afford, and the transportation impact fees on top of the renovation costs would be over $300,000. So, and that would basically render our project dead in the water. Considering the chiropractic office only, the cost to move into the building that's been empty for five years is about $40 a square foot in impact fees. So that's $80,000 just to move my office three blocks down the street. Our current chiropractic building is going to go for sale this year, and if it costs 80K for me to move into an empty building downtown, how will any other local doctor or business be able to do that? Our neighbor, Dr. Barnhart, the optometrist in our building for the last 40 years, where's he going to go? So anyway, we're asking that the Bothell City Council look at how the transportation impact fees will affect small business, local businesses. Right now, buildings in downtown Bothell are sitting empty for years, and we're wondering what is the incentive for small businesses to open? What is being offered to help preserve buildings? Currently, we can only see huge roadblocks in the form of exorbitant transportation impact fees. So I've got a lot more I could say. I don't know how much time I have, but I've searched through the Imagine Bothell 24, 2024 Comprehensive, and got a bunch of excerpts. And in there, you say all kinds of stuff, like you want to positively affect the evolution of the downtown, the environs, reverse forces of disinvestment in the historic center, fully restored height and all that. But anyway, we're at an impasse, so.
Thank you, Donald.
Yep, thank you.
Next, I have Dan DeMan.
Yeah.
No, that's really it. Awesome. Good deal. All right. Good evening, City Council. So I'm here in support, of course, of the skate park. My name's Dan Dooman. I am a member of the Bothell Skate Park Committee, and also host of the Rollerblade Community Seattle Weekly Skate Session of Friendships, our Wednesday night session. So what it is, give you a little bit about myself. I'm a 38-year skater, riding since I was a little baby, rollerblade, skateboard, scooter, bike, everything. I grew up in the skate parks. Skate parks, my world. And I live and breathe skate park my whole life. Like I said, started when I was a little kid. And managing the Seattle Weekly Skate Session, I've been hosting this group for like five years. The group's been going since 2001. It's here in Puget Sound. And what it is, it's a group of people, like 30 people on average, every Wednesday. We travel around to different places every Wednesday, always looking for cool places to skate. And unfortunately, we have always had to bypass Bothell because there's nothing here. And there's not even really much up here in the north end. So what I'm also here is to advocate how awesome it would be to have more of a strong skate park present. It would be good for the community. I like the artistic feature, like maybe put some designs on it, put a roof on it. That's going to make it a destination park to get everyone to come join us, can come join Bothell, come eat some food here, stay in the hotels, pander at the restaurants, everything. And I've been dreaming of being a part of something like this my whole life. I got the opportunity, so I'm jumping on this thing like a kangaroo, bringing the energy. I'd love to see some great things going on in the skate park community because every Wednesday, I have to find a dry place to skate for us. We don't have that option. There's a couple DIY parks that are under bridges that are kind of tacky. I mean, they're fun, but, you know, they're small, and it's nothing really like family-friendly, other than like the two paid indoor places that, you know, they're not even open that often. You get like two hours if you're lucky, and you're paying money for it. Amazing things like having a good destination park that's going to bring the people here is going to be that cover, the roof, things like that. I just think it's going to be an amazing thing if we get that here in the community and kind of tie it all together with everything. I like the concept of adding it with everything else because there's so many communities here. I think this is you guys' opportunity to bring everyone together, and I definitely want to be a part of this, and I hope you guys do, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Sam Edinger.
Well, I think the horse is dead, but I'm going to keep beating it. I'm Sam Edinger. I am the head of BFC. We're Borders for Christ. We're a skateboarding ministry, and we show up at random skate parks, do barbecues, bring the community together. We work with youth, adults alike, everything. We just, I'm here to advocate for, not just for having the skate park, but maybe like some parameters around it based off of maybe the faults of other skate parks that I've seen around as I've grown up for 22 years skateboarding as well. I'd like to advocate for keeping the skate park its own spaces within the park, obviously, but, but giving it a little bit of space from, say, a spray park, or maybe not making it an accessory to the children's playground, which a lot of skate parks are, and we end up having a lot of kids just running crazy in the park and stuff. So leading into my next point, it's a place for all ages. It's all, all ages of the community. Young, they're learning. Old, it's their culture, my culture. And just a place that we can have our community activities in a safe spot. Also advocate for lights, tend to keep some of the riffraff away at night, you know? And, and, you know, you're trying to get your trick, takes a little bit of time, you know, it gets dark, you got the lights coming on. And one last thing, since we do like to do our barbecues, possibly some of them little standing barbecues and like some benches or something, maybe off to the side would be nice. It'd be just for, you know, that's not just for us, but just a couple of parameters I thought would be cool to note. But yeah, I think that's all I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I just had a first name, but Craig? No? Okay, that's all I have signed up, but if anyone else in the audience, yep, if y'all want to just come and kind of queue up by the podium, and if you could please state your name for the record, and then you'll have three minutes.
Mine won't take three minutes. Good evening. Liz Aspen from Woodinville. I was invited, as Bill was, by Rosemary McAuliffe to participate in this committee to launch an effort to bring a skate park to the city of Bothell. I was a Parks and Rec Commissioner for the city of Woodinville and went on to a city council, and I was intimately involved with every aspect of creating our skate park that we had. we have and is well-used in the city of Woodenville. And what I want to say, what a wonderful financial gift you have been given by the McCullough family. I can't think of a better way to honor Jim and Rosemary McCullough for all of the service and that they have supported this community for over the years, to have them, their financial gift to perpetuate this project forward. And secondly, and as you can see, this is an incredible community of leaders that you have before you tonight, and I've got a lot of adjectives here. They're organized, they're enthusiastic, they're knowledgeable about everything skate park, they're well-connected in the skate park community, which is what you would need, and they're committed to seeing this project through to the end. So all I want to say is I would urge you to invite them to have a seat at the table to be a part of this project. I think you guys are already down the road, you're way ahead of we ever were in Woodenville. You have, you have a land, we didn't even have land, you already have an existing park, we didn't have any of that. So you already have the momentum going for you, but use them to help you in planning, developing, fundraising, they're committed to raise additional funds for you. And finally, for celebrating this great project in this, in this community, and having it be a destination place for Bothell, as well as surrounding communities. And I hope you embrace this opportunity that's been presented before you. Thank you.
Thanks, Liz. Could you state your name, please?
All right, I'm Derek Macias. Nice to meet you guys. Am I good to go?
You're good.
Good to go, okay. As I said, Derek Macias, I'm with DNA Skate School. My partner, Ashley Wong, is right behind me here. We run it together, we work with the community with Dan Dooman and, or Dan De Man, and a number of other people here as well. We've been a part of the skate school for a long period of time. We've seen a lot of personal growth within, you know, every youth to adults. We practice and teach with everybody, and we learn from everybody, from all ages. We like, one of our slogans is from, you know, one-year-old to 100-years-old, no matter the age. It develops a lot of confidence, it's a lot of team building. I think it's very important for the youth and for the development of everybody around us. We've also been a part of the World Skate Games, a number of us that are here tonight. We do a bunch of downhill skating, it's allowed us to travel the world, see the impact that it's made, the culture on, on everybody, even a part of the community or outside of the community of skating. It's, it's very engaging, it builds families. You know, we refer to ourselves as a family, more so than just a community. You know, we've, we've, we also have worked with, we're a part of SkateIA, which is a skaters and instructors association. You know, we go to schools, we help the kids teach, we help them learn, and again, we learn some things on our own. This encourages youth sports, growth, collaboration with a diverse community of all ages, people from all over the world, and everything above and beyond. You know, we're working on something that's for an international community that's tied together for urban sports and extreme sports, so maybe hopefully working with Pam Miller in the future will be something that comes upon. You know, the, you know, this is, this is more for the community as a whole, too. So this comes for more than just a skate park, you know? It'd be, it'd be nice to see all sorts of development that impacts the, the community of Bothell as a whole. I grew up here, I've been going here when it was a wooden skate park, and then a concrete skate park, and, and, you know, unfortunately, it's a parking lot now, but, you know, things change, and sometimes things change again, so maybe that'll be another changing momentum towards getting it rebuilt. You know, and with that being said, it'd be nice to see a gardening community, or some kind of classes, or some kind of association. And most importantly, probably a, a covered space, as Dan says, is extremely important, because that really gives us a place to, to go all the time and really use it for its full potential. And of course, lights, and, you know, is that blinking because I'm done?
You've got a minute.
Oh, I still got a minute? Wow, all right. Yeah, no, the, the cover space, you know, it's important, because we have, you know, in California, they have cover spaces for, for shade, to keep people cool and keep them dry and keep them healthy. Same thing for here, you know, keep them, keep them active, keep them going, keep them actually working together, team-building, working on relationships with people all around. It's, it's extremely important, and, and I think just having the skate park and, and having the, the park as a whole, I think is, is good for the community. It's healthy, it's healthy, it's positive, you know? It's, that's what we're all looking for, so that's, that's pretty much it, that's all I gotta say. So, love you guys, appreciate you.
Thanks, Derek. Can you state your name for the record, please?
Ashley Wong. Okay. Hi, I'm Ash. I am part of DNA Skate School. If you asked me five years ago that I would be advocating for a skate park, I would have been like, who are you talking to? Because I did not actually skate at a skate park until three years ago, and I bought rollerblades on my 30th birthday because, for myself, because I want to feel like a kid again. Like, I want, I was like, I want to go, there's a skate shop in Seattle, which is a thing, there's two actually, and I bought my own aggressive skates, and I met these crazy fools over here. But I say crazy, but it's the most positive community I've ever been a part of. I'm a woman, I started Emerald City Skaties, was a totally free thing for, for women, just to come to the park and skate together. And, you know, we try to be positive, we try to meet little kids. I've seen, I've met you guys at two skate parks. So it's like, hi again. It's like, we, we've done paint and skates, we've done clothing swaps and skates, all at skate parks, we, and when it's raining, or when the lights go off, we have to go under a garage. Derek and I started our skate school, our first place was at the UWQFC, because it was undercover, and it was a little bit like, I would say, humbling for me, I was embarrassed, because my, my priority is safety, you know? We are certified instructors, we do want to teach, we do partner, we partner with Altogether Skate Park and Bellevue Skate Park, but you know, those are, those are two places you have to pay to go, and not everyone can go during the hours that they're open. I'm unable to snowboard this year because the price is too high, and I'm an occupational therapist, so I have the means to do these things, but a lot of the people in my community do not. The money is there, if Derek and I wanted to leave our jobs, we could just do full-on private lessons, I know we could just book it, book it, book it, but we do so many free things because skating is our passion, skating is fun, and yeah, I just want to see, see something with lights, so I can say hi to the soccer players at night. But yeah, thank you for this opportunity, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Ashley. Can you state your name for the record, please?
I'm Russell Smith. I am a dinosaur. I've been skating since 1972, I've been on a board for 52 years. I've skated the best and the worst of everything all over the United States of America. I appreciate all of you, I'm wondering why no one's asking any questions, because we've dumped a lot of information on you. I really want to emphasize the importance of a good design build, because the worst thing we can do is spend a whole lot of money on something that nobody's gonna use. For some reason, in Washington State, we do not have one outdoor skate park that's covered. And it really does rain here a lot, and during the winter, people set at home and eat and play video games and get fat. So if we had a place to go where we could skate, I can afford to lose a few pounds, that would be great. The reality of putting a roof on a skate park is done all over the world. There are a ton of different designs and ways to apply that, and if you build that with the roof as part of the consideration, it's a lot less expensive than it is if you try to come up with it as an afterthought. As far as the design is concerned, smaller is not necessarily safer. I've seen a lot of skate designs that were built for parks, and because they were concerned about the height or the depth, they downsized it, and people got hurt. Or they just didn't like it and wouldn't skate it. So my plea to you is to do some homework, to talk to the skaters and the others that have had a lot of experience with skate parks. I'm, I'm an open book, I'm a walking historian, and I do appreciate your attention and your opportunity that you've offered us to make a new place for people to come and skate. It'll pay off, because if it's built in a manner that attracts skaters, you could be looking at a place that is literally looked at as a skate park internationally, not just locally. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Russell. Can you state your name, please? You have three minutes.
Hi, I'm Elisa Duklos, and I'm a graduate of Bothell High School, lived in Bothell for pretty much my whole life. And I wanted to come, I know that you're voting tonight on the amendment to move forward on the Imagine Bothell Plan, as far as the consulting to implement it, and I wanted to just voice my, have it on the record that I do not support it. I don't like how Bothell is moving forward. I think that we need to go back and revisit it and get more of the community involved. I don't think the community has been involved in the city council for the last, I don't know how long. I can tell you, this is my first time coming, and so you aren't reaching the community. I think that we, you need to have more transparency. For example, for the agenda tonight, I had no idea that we were talking about a skate park, or that there was even a thing about, a consideration about a skate park. I don't necessarily have an opinion on it, but, and is there, on the website, is there a way to find what the budget is and where are we at on the budget? Or why aren't financials, high-level financials shown in the city council meetings, so that we know what, where we're at? On that, so anyways, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Elisa.
Mayor, I don't have anyone in the virtual office, so I guess that's it.
Two things, city manager, the, the final commenter had some questions that I know that we have pretty simple answers to, and like ways to find things on the website. If we have our contact info, would you mind having somebody reach out and answer those questions?
Happy to, and I have a card on me if we need to exchange information.
Okay, fantastic. And also, just as a reminder to everybody, council doesn't respond to public comment as a matter of course, it doesn't indicate a lack of interest on our part or a lack of attention. So, and we, and we appreciate you all coming out. Say what? Oh, yeah.
Mayor, could you perhaps point out our Parks and Recreation Director for people to make connections with? Sorry, Nick.
He'll, he'll be presenting like four times tonight.
Just in case people leave before, sometimes people leave after public comment, I don't know why.
He's the really handsome guy in the back that kind of looks like me, except he's clean-shaven. Yeah, yeah, I did that on purpose. All right, we are moving on to reports, and first up is the city manager report.
Thank you, Mayor, and I know nobody would leave. I mean, what, this agenda is packed with good information, so I'm sure people will stick around. We have two staff reports tonight to, to update council briefly on some information, but first, I want to just call out, we have a new addition to the lobby, so for people who are joining us who might not know it's new, I want them to appreciate it, but also for council, to be able to make sure that you direct your way over to the left as you leave council chambers. You'll recall that last fall, we had an update from the Arts Commission chair about some of the things they were working on, and one of them was to support transforming what had been a living wall when this building first opened, and then the bugs came, and turned into a blank wall. And so there was money dedicated to building that wall up and getting it structurally ready to do something else. And working with the Arts Commission, they selected an artist named Beth Ann Lawson, who painted a really great painting of Bothell, has a lot of the elements that we know of Bothell and help us to call Bothell home, including the bridge, some crows, nod to campus, it's pretty exciting. So that's new as of last week and wanted to note it. There will be more information coming out about that, including, as you know, the Arts Commission also, a couple of things with them, they're gonna have a joint meeting with you in the first quarter of the year, so they're gonna talk more about the process of how they selected the artist and what it means. But also, they work with, with staff to select artists that we rotate new artwork in every two months for, in City Hall, and Beth Ann, who created the wall art, is, we're gonna have an exhibit for her starting in April and May. So we'll have more information about her and really spotlighting her art, but if you do go out to, to, it's actually, her website is her name, Beth Ann Lawson, all one word, you can see some of her paintings that she does, and she also does art in the form of dioramas, so pretty cool stuff. With that, we're gonna transition to, as you know, this week, we kicked off the state legislative session for 2025. We anticipate it's gonna be a very busy session, it's a long one, and a lot of bills to be tracked. So tonight, Tony Call, our deputy city manager, is joining us just to give a brief overview of what you can expect as we navigate between now and April, and how we'll keep informed and what to do if there's any questions. With that, I'll turn things over to Tony.
Thank you, City Manager Stannert, mayor, and deputy mayor and council members. As always, it's a pleasure back in front of you tonight. I have a very brief staff report, it's reminder-only information only this evening. As City Manager Stannert just said, our legislative session started yesterday on January 13th, it is 105 days long, so we have 103 left to go, with actual ending of the legislative session on April 27th. The legislature has quite a bit to do this session, they've got to adopt a operating capital and transportation budgets, while also considering hundreds of bills that will be introduced throughout the session. So our first cutoff date is actually six weeks from now, on February 21st. So in talking with Shelley Helder, our lobbyist, we are expecting a very busy next six weeks, because all the bills will be dropped in the next six weeks. So we're expecting to see many come forward. As you are aware, on November 26th, council did adopt a resolution for their state legislative agenda and policy manual, they are attached in your packet this evening. Those documents are key to both Shelley Helder and myself, as to the rest of the city staff, as we look at the bills that come in to understand where our council's standing on many of the things. But we also know that somebody's gonna think of something that we didn't think about. So we know they're gonna come up with a new idea or something else to come forward, so we've got a couple ideas on how to address those. So first of all, Shelley Helder, our city lobbyist, will be sending out the weekly report, more than likely coming out on Mondays. I know sometimes we might have holidays, it might be a Tuesday, but most times it should come out on Mondays, you'll continue to get those every week. And a new thing that we have, we're doing this year mainly in response back to council, is that we'll be back in front of you three times during the session. We've tentatively scheduled, and it's really tentative, February 4th, March 4th, and April 1st, to come back and do a verbal check-in on the legislative session, what's happening, what's not happening, if we've got bills that we don't understand what we should be taking a stand on, we'll bring those back to you as well during those times. And if we find that those times just don't quite work, and something's coming in out of schedule, which certainly could happen, we'll make sure we find time on a staff briefing to come back in front of you to get any feedback that we need in order to make sure that we are delivering on your priorities of the state legislative agenda. So all this to say, we are gearing up, the legislative session is rolling, we have 103 days left to go, and as always, if bills or issues arise that council needs information on, your first point of contact is probably Shelley Helder, our city lobbyist. Outside of that, Mr. Stannert and myself are always available to you to ensure that we are meeting your direction. So with that, I think we'll come back to you on February 4th, and you should be getting weekly reports up until then. Thank you.
Hang on a second, in case anybody in council has questions. Do, does, can we clarify with Shelley Helder if she has everything that she needs to sign in pro on the parking bill?
I can certainly check into that, yes, I will. I think it's 5184, if I remember correctly.
It's a Senate bill. Senator Bateman is, is running it.
I'll find out what she needs.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Our second staff briefing tonight is related to one of your council priorities within the priority area of moving in and around Bothell. As you'll recall, the priority itself is to create a micro-mobility strategy. So joining us tonight, we have Sherman Gong, our transportation planner, as well as Rayad Thiri, who is going to be, they'll be presenting to give a quick update, again, on what to expect over the coming months on this council party, including some outreach that started this week. With that, I'll turn it over to staff.
Good evening, council members, mayor, deputy mayor, council members. I'm here tonight to provide you guys with a briefing about the draft micro-mobility strategies we are working on as one of council's priorities. Currently, we are developing some draft strategies for regulation and implementation. This briefing is to give you a high-level overview and provide you with background information about our public outreach process and the next steps that we're taking. No action is requested from council this evening. No action is requested from council this evening. The 2040 Council Vision includes three-year strategic priorities for the 2023 to 2025 period in focus areas, including moving in and around Bothell. One of the strategic priorities for this focus area is to create a micro-mobility Tonight, I will cover the goals we have identified for developing micro-mobility strategies and quickly go over a little background as to how the city engaged our micro-mobility initially through use of shared devices. I will also go over our community engagement process and the timeline for completing the draft strategies for council approval. If you're not familiar with micro-mobility devices, they include, but are not limited to, bikes and electric bikes, scooters and electric scooters, uni-wheels, which is an electric-driven unicycle, skateboards, and one-wheels, which are electric skateboards with a single wheel placed in the middle of the board, segways and roller blades and, or roller skates.
Hey, Sherman, on a scale of one to 10, how happy are you that you put skateboards in that list?
I'd...
I was, I was like, yes, good.
Peer lock. So, so the two goals that we intend to meet for the proposed strategies are to identify actions necessary to make micro-mobility a viable and equitable transportation alternative and to develop guidelines and rules to encourage the safe and efficient use and operation of all micro-mobility options. The history of micro-mobility in Bothell started in 2017 with the placement of shared-use bikes through Lime, but were soon removed and replaced in 2019 by electric scooters, which have been deployed seasonally, yet maintain a minimal user base and basically forms the foundation of the shared micro-mobility device system. Staff sees the benefit of using micro-mobility as a first mile and last mile option for commuting, which will reduce congestion and climate impacts, particularly in areas which access transit facilities such as parking rides and major transit stops. Due to the variable speed capacity from one device to another, staff will be following guidelines for speed control to allow for the safe mix of devices between pedestrians and other users and to maintain consistency for users from one jurisdiction to another. We will look at how these strategies will affect the shared use, shared use, will affect the shared-use devices, which are somewhat controllable through the vendors versus privately-owned devices, which the city has really no means to control other than through regulation, such as driving a car, for example. Ultimately, the strategies need to address safety, education, enforcement, and equity for the use of these devices throughout the city to create a sustainable transportation option that is available to everyone. We have engaged the community through surveys and will work with stakeholders, internal staff, planning commission, and the council. Staff engagement with the community regarding micro-mobility essentially started when these devices were put on the city streets in 2017 and 2019 with mainly complaints from residents that were wondering, where did this all come from? But their response was to let the vendor know some conditions of use within the public right-of-way and that they had to share with their users to control that. More recently, staff conducted a survey in the Canyon Park subarea only to encourage the use of transportation demand management to reduce single-driver vehicles in the area. We'll be looking back at those results for this as well. And a citywide survey regarding micro-mobility is now available online through the Engage Bothell website to obtain feedback from the public. We encourage council members to visit the website and take the survey, particularly for the scoping questions. The link to the website is simply bothellwaw.gov/micromobility. And the survey will be available to take till the end of January. Staff will review the survey results and develop the initial draft micro-mobility strategies to be shared and reviewed internally and with stakeholders and adjacent jurisdictions. We will plan to meet with Planning Commission in the spring to obtain their recommendations, followed by council study sessions in summer this year. As we mentioned at the beginning of the briefing, no council action is requested tonight. Thank you all for your time.
They liked it. Good job.
Anybody? Oh, Councilmember Dodd.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. I really appreciate it. And good recovery after the mayor made you laugh in the middle. So I am wondering a lot of things. I'm super excited about this. Obviously, this is a priority that the seven of us set. Okay, I'm just going to ask like three random questions and then I'll wait for the rest. But for Lime, do we pick that they pretty much only deploy scooters or are they choosing only to deploy scooters? What, because I don't see bikes anymore, but I do see scooters. Like, I'm excited when I see them up on Nike Hill where I live because, one, that's hard to scooter up, which means they're, they're getting all over the city, but who's picking which devices are being deployed?
My understanding is that we are, the city obviously can pick what devices we want to use. I think the, from the past, you know, experience of just how they're deployed, who's using the usage and stuff like that, that they're kind of sticking with the scooters until we have kind of a more, some more regulations and idea of what can and where they can be deployed, basically.
Councilmember Dodd, that program is actually managed out of the executive office. So we'll get with Ashish Joshi, our economic development coordinator, and get some information back to you.
Okay, yeah, I would love more of an overview on that to know where to ask questions, maybe is where this is going. And then the other, I guess the other part of that, I'll just look at Kyle this time. Someone pointed out to me that you can get a scooter in Lake City through Lake Forest Park. You're stopped at Kenmore, it won't operate in the city of Kenmore, and then you can like resume your scooter trip in Bothell, which sounds like a long thing, but we have a trail that connects us all. Like, I'm wondering, is there opportunity as we review our strategy to look at other jurisdictions and if not a line, right? Like, just find ways to be like, hey, we're doing this. Like, what do you think? Wouldn't it be cool if I could ride my scooter through your city?
Yeah, I mean, I think that's a good opportunity where, when we discuss it, we'll talk about what we can control and what we can influence.
Yeah, I know we can't make all the rules, but it would be cool to, to just have a continuity discussion.
Absolutely, and I'll look forward to going to DC with you soon, and you can see what it's like to have five companies competing where you cut off at a block.
I spilled my coffee in Spokane on a Lime scooter, so I'm looking forward to it. Lesson not learned, I still drink coffee.
On a scooter?
This is really exciting, and I won't swarm you with more questions till we have the survey back, but I think there's a lot of opportunity here. I look at like how I am as kind of, I don't want to say I'm a tourist in Seattle, but I do live in Bothell. So if I take the light rail down, I will take a Lime scooter to wherever I'm going, and it's awesome. And I would love to give people more options to come here without driving and get around the city. Or just to tie it in with what we've heard tonight, you know, they've got their skateboard and they can just skate all the way to the skate park. That might end up being super awesome. So this is really cool. Thanks for the presentation.
I'll go quickly. In the world of micro-mobility, has there been any kind of enough experience to say where the greatest demands drive micro-mobility? Like, for hills, you know, you're talking about first mile, last mile. Is it, is it terrain? Is it the kind of housing? Is it parking availability? What sort of things contribute to its success?
At this point in time, micro-mobility and these devices are pretty leading-edge stuff. And the, from the, the research I've done so far, the, the main, the main driver is really transit, transportation hubs and trying to get those, those devices where people can connect with transit or, you know, Lyft or any other, you know, way you can get around, Flex, you know, Flex Car, like circulator bus, you know, type of, you know, services. They all, they're all kind of meshing at these transit hubs, transportation hubs, and those, those are kind of the main, the main drivers outside of just like destinations, like say for like, for example, UW-Bothell or, or a library or something like that, that that people might want to use it.
Right, well, thank you for doing this, and it looks like it's a fun problem to solve, so I'm, I'm looking forward to seeing what you come up with.
Thank you.
Councilmember Aldrich.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for this presentation. I just want to put a plug in for taking the survey and going to engagebothell.com where this, where you can take the survey, because I took it the other day and it very much provided me an opportunity to relay feedback that I had heard from members of the community as well as my children. And, and I just want to make it, like, make sure that the community knows that this survey is not just about, you know, having Lime devices in our city. It's, it really is as broad as how do you get around on wheels that are not a car? And so really, it's open to everyone in the community who, you know, uses, uses, you know, any of those, any of those like people-powered wheeled devices. I don't think of a car as people-powered. And also, like, what are your barriers for those who don't use, who, who don't feel safe or comfortable necessarily going out and biking through our community or skateboarding? Like, what are those barriers? In, in my neighborhood, it was cracked sidewalk in front of my house. Like, that was the thing that kept my mom from walking to the mailbox. And so like, she didn't get the mail for years because the sidewalk was cracked until Public Works fixed our sidewalk, and it was just really amazing. And that's sort of a, an example of the types of barriers that people can experience when they're thinking about how are we going to get around our community? And so this survey really is an opportunity to, to look at, well, why not? Or when you've tried, what is it like? And, you know, what would help you feel more comfortable, confident, safe doing these things that you maybe want to do but haven't necessarily felt, felt able to do so? So that's, that's how I kind of saw the survey as an opportunity for the community. That's how I sort of provided my feedback. I don't know if I can get my kids to like sign up and fill it out themselves, but I definitely wanted them to know that I heard them and, and thought of what, you know, included, included their thoughts and in my comments as well. So I just hope that members of the community will really take the time, you know, five to 10 minutes is, is not too much. And it's also kind of one of those fun surveys that we do. We often see that when there's a fun survey, people, we get more people responding, and it really helps to have community partners who, you know, really help us push the survey out to reach more people. Like, what is it like when you're coming, you know, when you're in Bothell using, you know, trying to get around? And, and I just really hope that we can get good feedback. And I have a lot of confidence in our, in our staff who can, you know, bring those results together and report them back to us so that we can really hear and understand what our community is saying. So thanks for that. And, and thank you for, you know, making this survey possible so that I could share some of those thoughts that I had heard. Thanks.
The, thank you for this. I appreciate this. I'm excited to make it easier to move in and around Bothell, not in a vehicle. A couple things. We might want to look at the language that we use because electric devices like bikes are not necessarily faster than pedal-powered bikes because the electric assist cuts off at a certain amount, and then you're pedaling a bike with a whole lot more, you know, resist, motor resistance as well as weight on there. And they're pretty easy to ride slower. Like, the problem is the person riding too fast, not necessarily the device. And I would just say, as we go through and do this, I would love us to focus more on enabling these devices rather than making rules restricting them. Like, how can we build infrastructure that, that is safe for these folks to use as opposed to how do we regulate inherently unsafe infrastructure to try to make the best of it? Like, if we're gonna, if we're gonna try to do this right, let's try to do this right and give folks the infrastructure they need. So I'd, I'd love us to focus more on that. And I think that's all I've got. Oh, yeah?
Okay, you kind of reminded me. As far as like access to the city, I will say, I've, I've talked before about having a disability that affects my mobility, and taking a Lime scooter or bike or whatever, something with wheels to get to my next destination faster gives me more energy to walk around, like whatever that is. Like, some days I've got 20 minutes of walking in me and I'm going to spend it, you know, as smartly as I can. So if I, like, I just want to say, like, it's not just a fun thing. I remember my, my dad gave me a little bit of grief about taking the Lime scooters, and I was like, listen, it helps me do more once I'm at my destination. If I walk six blocks versus scooter six blocks, I, I have a different experience by the time I get there on a bad day. So I did just want to put that pitch out there as we think about this.
Thank you, guys. We appreciate it. Everybody go take the survey.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. So that concludes the city managers' portions of reports.
All right. It is, say what? It is 7:06. We're going to take a quick break before we continue. We will be back at 7:20 in 14 minutes. All right, welcome back. Next up in our projected agenda discussion is direction on proposal received for a night market event series. We have a staff briefing, and City Manager Stannert's going to introduce us to the topic.
Thank you, Mayor. And as you'll recall, back on October 1st, council gave direction to explore an expansion of summer programming in the form of a night market. Staff's conducted an RFP, and tonight, Nick Stroup, our director of Parks and Recreation, is here to give you an update on the proposals we received. Tonight, essentially, we are looking for direction before embarking in contract negotiations now that we have something back to see if council is interested in moving forward. And with that, I probably took Nick's speaking points. I'll turn it over to him.
All right. Thank you, City Manager Stannert, and good evening, Mayor, deputy mayor, and city council. So like Kyle said, tonight I'm here seeking your direction on whether to proceed with negotiating a contract based on the results of an RFP for a community event series called North Shore Nights. So on October 1st, 2024, city council directed staff to create a request for proposals for a weekly night market event series in downtown Bothell. Staff received a single response for the RFP from Gilly Wagon LLC. Gilly Wagon's proposal includes producing a 15-week Saturday night series starting May 31st through August 30th using the pedestrianized section of Main Street from 7:00 PM till 12:00 AM. The costs as proposed are $15,000 per event for a total of $225,000 plus in-kind city services, bringing the total cost of the 15-week series to roughly $300,000 for 2025. So those in-kind city services include things like permitting, so your special event permit, your food truck permits, your fire permits, and your inspection services. It also includes sanitation, so think of things like portable restrooms, wash stations, and garbage control, and then also traffic control and security as needed. Funding considerations and next steps. The finance director has confirmed that the city's general fund budget is projected to exceed reserve policies, which would provide a funding source, if you choose to do so, for the 15-week series in 2025. And should council approve moving forward, staff will begin contract negotiations with Gilly Wagon LLC, and if negotiations are successful, staff will return to council for final approval of a contract. And again, if approved, staff will also revisit our summer nights program, likely removing the market nights, but adding new elements focused on music, family, culture, theater, and art. So tonight, again, we're just seeking direction from you on whether or not to proceed with negotiating a contract. And we did not create this proposal, so there are questions that I understand that, that some of you have. We will be able to, to... We will be able to, to push those forward to the, the proposer and, and certainly ask those questions if you choose to, to proceed forward. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to Mayor Mason Thompson.
Council? Or, wait, I'm going to go first on this one because I think I was the one that, that, that brought this up originally. I have gone through this presentation from Gilly Wagon and I, like, I feel hurt. Like, I think they did a really good job encapsulating kind of what it is that Rep. Doerr, when she was on the City Council, and I kind of originally kicked this conversation off with in 2021 or something like that. And I'm, I mean, down to the picture of like, love your neighbor on there, like, I love it. So, no, I mean, it's, I'm, I'm super excited about it. I can't wait to go to these events and I'm, I'm really happy with this. Councilmember Zornz.
Can I add my two bits?
Absolutely.
It's just questions that I have about, about this. One is, is this something that we want to put a measurable goal on what we call success? I don't know. I don't know if that's something the Council wants to do and how would we measure, you know, how would we measure that? I've done geocaching block parties and those are fun. And then, um.
You got Dan.
Yeah. And then, um, uh, so we would not have to cut spending this year to make this happen? Is what you're saying? Okay. But if we were to move forward, then we'd have to have some hard conversations or more.
Yeah. So the funding source that we're talking about is really for 2025. Anything above and beyond that, we would need to bring it back and have a conversation with how you'd like to fund that.
And that would take place during the mid-biennium.
Okay. And then the other question that I have is because, you know, I, I fess and worry about things, is June is not called, is called January for a reason. And being an avid Evans Farmer's Market girl, I know that the start in May and June is really slow, but they go through October and it's, it's hot and heavy because there's, you know, we have those lovely warm days. And I was wondering if they would, if they and, and Council would be interested in shifting the timeframe to shaving off June and going in through the end of September. And that way we would capture students coming back for, back to school and pulling them into downtown for fun. And so anyway, I wanted to toss that, toss that out of, you know, maybe shifting the, the schedule on that. But I, oh, oh, and then the other thing was, what do we think about encouraging busking? Because we've got a lot of musical people in Bothell. You know, at some point, can we encourage buskers to come to Bothell instead of necessarily always having, hiring music? Could we include buskers?
So typically with buskers, we actually hire buskers and they, they come and we pay them for their services.
We do that too, as well.
Yeah.
And they're not like the Pike Place Market.
I'm not certain if that's part of this proposal. That's certainly a question that we could ask and pose.
Well, definitely we need music, but I would just love, you know, community involvement of bringing musicians in and finding a corner and doing their music. So, um, anyway, and I love the tweaking that's going to happen with the Friday nights. So thank you for doing this. I hope you've had fun doing this.
Councilmember Aldrichs.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm, I'm really grateful that this proposal came to us because it really does sound like, like, maybe they even came to some Endless Summer Nights events and saw like what we were doing and, and how, they have a really good idea of, of, of what we're trying to recreate and extend here in the community. And so I, I think it's like right on the, the ask. Like, they're definitely getting what, what we were hoping to see. And so then I'm just going to dig a little bit into like the budget and finances part of it. Really glad to hear that, that there's no like budgetary concern for this year. Like, it's essentially funded. We could go forward. It'd be like, sounds great. I, my question is then, since, since we know how much our like Endless Summer Nights events cost, how does their quote compare to what the city is already putting out?
Yeah, their quote actually was not really surprising. So if you look at our Summer Nights events, in 2023, it cost about $100,000 to produce the six events. There are a couple of numbers that tweak that. I'll say that because our partnership with Northwest Folklife is about $30,000. And then also out of that, we pay for the bistro lights, which actually remain on Main Street all the way through January each year. So those numbers tweak it a little bit, but it's about $18,500 per event to produce. And then we also have to add our staff time, which I didn't add to that, but that's just the production. So the numbers seem to be in line with sort of what we've been doing.
I'm actually really glad to hear that. Because I, I guess if, if a member of the community had come up to me at one of those events and asked me, how much do you think the city paid for this? I would not have known. And I would not have been able to answer that question. And seeing this, the operational budget in the proposal, I now know what it, I know what it took to put that on and what it takes to do. And so this is estimating a cost per event of 15,000. And that's including staff for, you know, the, the group. I'm going to get it wrong. Gilly what? Gilly Wagon. There we go. It was not on the page I was looking at. But that's really great. Like, it sounds really good how they've been able to budget it and, and really hear what, what we're looking for and how we can bring more of these events to the community. I, I have memories of very lovely, beautiful Memorial Day weekends in this area. So I don't know if I feel the need to move it past June, but I do know that kids aren't out of school yet. So I don't necessarily have an opinion on, on whether the schedule would change, but the fact that it could be for 15 weeks just sounds amazing. Thank you.
Councilmember Dodd.
Thanks. Thank you for this, for direction purposes. Super thumbs up. If I had more than two thumbs, I would throw them up. And I love that we can afford it because that was going to be kind of my only question. I firmly believe we have to do our required things so we can do the fun things. It's nice to know that we have budget for the fun things. So really appreciate it.
Councilmember Curd.
Thanks. I appreciate the, the work that went into getting this information and thanks for including the whole sort of proposal in the packet. It was fun to see kind of how they market themselves and the possibilities, easy to kind of dream. I like it a lot. I like the fact that we're focused not only in the built environment, but programming. That's a really important part of our culture as a city and starting to grow our community a little bit after, after events. And so I'm, I'm also wondering a little bit about the finances and I know that it is expensive, but it's great to see or hear that we have the sort of discretionary Council funds to put to something like this. But I'm also wondering how we can like, what, what would it look like to scale it a little bit? And instead of just do it for one year, be more confident that we can continue it on in the next? And I don't know if the proposal really works to scale it down because they probably have built in efficiencies for doing it for the whole 15 weeks. But I'm just wondering if that's a possibility to ask or look into, to scale it down by a couple of weeks and maybe then be more comfortable and confident that the next year we can maybe invite them back or invite another proposal for, for events without like having to, having to starve ourselves from other things so that we can have the fun too. So just thinking about it.
I think we could definitely ask that question. Gilly Wagon LLC is a for-profit business, so scaling it down might raise the actual event price. They, they are looking to, you know, make money while producing a really, really cool and fun event series. So that would be a question that we would ask during negotiations and see what that might look like and if there was a, a change to that, it certainly would come back to you in contract form.
And Council, it would be helpful to know, so we're hearing from Councilmember Curd about scaling. So before we leave this topic, it'd be helpful to know if that's, if that's direction that you all would like to see. And I'd like to know specifically too, for the, if that is the case of what, how many events you would be looking for. I know that Councilmember Manki has his hand up as well.
Just to finish my thought on scaling, maybe put a finer point on it, maybe 10 to 12 events rather than 15. Or eight to 12. Or, no, not, not less than eight. Okay, thanks.
Councilmember Manki.
Thank you, Mayor. I think the proposal was very well put together. They obviously have some experience doing this and I did some research on the firm and looks like they, they definitely, definitely know what a good event would be. And they did a good job putting their proposal together. I think the questions that I have are more data-driven questions. I'm wondering if the city has any data regarding resident requests for this type of event? I know we, we've got some data from the events that we have been doing with Summer Nights. I'm curious if there's been any kind of requests that have come in around night markets.
So we haven't had any specific requests, but I would sort of, you know, contextualize that with the, the fact that a lot of the events that we do, particularly the Summer Nights, get a lot of traction and they get a lot of positive feedback. This last year alone, we saw the most positive feedback that we've ever seen. We've seen our numbers grow each year. We were seeing sort of these, these groups out on social media that would, you know, post about the incredible time they had and then you'd see 100-plus comments. So I think that the community as a whole really enjoys these types of events. As far as a specific request from the community for a night market, you know, over the last few years, we've had some requests for perhaps a farmer's market or some, you know, variation of that. But I, I wouldn't say there's been anything specific that I could point to, you know, a data point to, but there has been a lot of excitement about the events that we currently produce.
Do we have any data points or any expectation on the mix of Bothell residents versus non-Bothell residents that we'd expect to attend?
We don't. I would say that we focus our program typically on local residents. So our marketing is really focused on Bothell residents. That doesn't mean that other residents don't come from other jurisdictions. Oftentimes I run into people from Kirkland and other places that have heard about our events and, and they wanted to come over and experience it for themselves. But I would say the primary audience and, and really the, the, the group that we're targeting with our, our marketing is Bothell residents.
Do we have any past experience or any data on the length of time and especially going so late into the evening on whether or not that's appealing or that we would see a lot of activity during the later hours?
We don't, but that was part of their proposal. So again, that's, if, if there's direction to, you know, shorten or lengthen that time, that would be certainly something we'd want to hear tonight as well from Council.
Okay, great. Thank you. I, I do think this is an interesting idea and I, I would like to see us try it out at a minimum. I think the duration of the series and the number of events is a bit longer than I would like to see, especially given the, the funds that we're spending for this. This, this $300,000 is not insignificant and there really is an opportunity cost to this money. It's not just extra money we happen to have in the general fund available. It's fortunate that we do have the money, but, you know, we have to think about all the opportunities available for, for this money, whether it's, you know, safety with sidewalks, whether it's other unfunded infrastructure projects. There's, there's unlimited number of things that this money could be spent on. And I do think that having a community gathering program is a great, great use of funds, but at this level and this investment, when we don't have any data around whether or not the number of events would be beneficial or, you know, how many residents versus non-residents would be attending. Obviously, we prefer residents to attend, but we do know there will be a large number of non-residents attending. So I would like to see us perhaps shorten, propose shortening the number of events. I would, I would prefer personally to see six to eight events this summer to try it out. I believe that would be a, a reasonable cost potentially and then a reasonable way to try this out and have data that we can then use to make a more informed decision on whether or not we continue this into the future.
Councilmember Aldrichs.
Thank you, Mayor. To, I, I actually do have feedback from the community that I've heard around how late these events run and especially around the solstice, when it's getting dark at like 10, 10:30 at night. People hate it to leave at nine o'clock. It's like the weirdest thing. They, everyone just kind of looked at each other like, but it's not dark yet. Why, why would we leave? And so I've definitely heard that, especially as we get into like the sunny summer months. Not like, ending before dark makes no sense to call it a night market. And I realize that we live in, you know, like, we're at a place in, in the world where we do get a later dark here. But to really keep that like party vibe and community vibe going, we definitely need to keep it going to dark, if not past dark. So I support the, the later times. And, and that is both from my experience, but like also just talking to people on the street as the market's shutting down and the sun is still up. And I, when it comes to like the negotiating on numbers, if we were to bring it down, I don't know how like supportive I am of that, but I would, I would support Carson's, Carson Malbrer Curd's suggestion of the eight to 12 somewhere in there. And, but I would very much want to see what kind of like efficiencies are lost and how the cost is affected by doing less. So thank you.
Councilmember Dodd.
Thank you. Just responding to the different questions that have come up. I probably, I like the, the proposal as we have it. I wouldn't want to change too much about it because I think part of this is trying something that's new to us. It's something that we don't do often enough, I think, as a local government. And I think that there's understandable caution in what we do, but if we can afford it, we've had, I mean, I've talked to a lot of residents who are like, there's nothing to do. And I'm a big advocate for, I mean, it would be, the goal of this isn't for us to make money as a city, but it would be silly to act like we're not hoping that we would not see increases in sales taxes from having a lot of people downtown. So residents are not, having people here can be really helpful. I would love to see what that looks like for a year. I don't necessarily want to kind of half-heartedly poke at it and hope that cool things happen so we can make it bigger later. I think we should give it a really good shot. So I, I like it as is. I would personally just not want it to, to go too much smaller because we might not really understand what it is. Not having data makes sense to me because I just don't know who's studying that. The, there's, even in, in my very technology-driven job, we don't have data for everything that people do and why they do it because it's impossible to get. All you have to do is, you know, block the wrong cookie and then we, we lose you. So I just, I don't know how we track that. I think that'd be really fascinating to dive into, but I, I don't want it to stop us from trying something new and seeing if we can make Bothell cool again. So, yeah. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. This is exciting. I'm also in favor of as is. I just have some questions regarding the cost to us. There's the in-kind cost, like how, how impact, is that part of the, the pri, the cost package that is presented here or is it going to be determined when we have the contract?
Well, this would be above and beyond the 225,000. So when I'm estimating at $300,000 for the series, that includes those in-kind costs. The in-kind costs, the way that we're approaching it, there definitely would be increased work from staff to, to develop that. But we would be looking to contract those services out. So think about, you know, the porta-pots, contracting that, contracting with recology. If there's traffic control, we would, you know, maybe do national barricade. We certainly could contract security as well if that's needed. So it kind of figured in those costs. And, and we kind of developed what that might look like based on the budget that they presented and then what in-kind services might look like.
And as you, I know it's hard to predict until you actually do it, but when you're negotiating the contract, how likely is it to stay within the range that you, that's mentioned in the agenda and what you mentioned also?
Well, the proposal that they put together was $15,000 per event. So I'm very confident that we can stay within that range.
Okay.
And I think that there potentially could be some savings on that additional in-kind services. I just don't know what those are exactly until we work, work through those deals.
Okay, that's cool. So you're, okay, you're confident that 15K plus or minus a couple hundred here and there is going to be, or I don't want to say 100,000 maybe, I don't know what the number is. But it's within their acceptable range that it's not going to go double, for example?
No, I'm confident that $300,000 would cover this.
Okay, thank you.
I'm going to go and then we can go around again because there are a few things that have come that I haven't had a chance to weigh in on. I don't know about you all, but by the time Memorial Day comes around, I am desperate to get outside and go do something. And if the weather isn't perfect, like at least it's not getting dark at 4:30 and like I can go out and have fun and I can wear a jacket and it'll be okay if it's a little cold. So I, I don't really want to put it off at all. I'd be totally open to doing more events in September, but I think that's probably a good conversation to have for year two after we have a year under our belt and we've got an idea of what's going on. And in terms of like data, I feel like this is the year we're acquiring that. Like this is the year where we're understanding what these events look like, who comes, how, how they work. And, and just because we're, you know, starting off doing one thing doesn't mean that we're committed to doing that thing forever. Like this isn't like, you know, sending a Mars rover up where we have to get everything exactly perfect before we launch it. Like I think we can just do cool stuff and have fun and adjust as we go. The, because I, I don't want this to be a one-year thing. Like I would like to come to events like this in 25, 30 years that started now. And like this just becomes a fabric of who we are as Bothell. Like we gather together and we have fun. And throwing a party is worth spending resources on. Like joy is worth like trying to cultivate in your community. You know, when I want to throw a party, I don't ask for data. Who's going to come? Where are those people from? Like what are they going to do while they're here? Like I throw a party and we have fun and that's okay. And if we get some data from that and there are other benefits aside from, you know, tax revenues that are coming in and things like that, but I think it's okay to just like throw your community a party and like have it be a really cool place to live and do cool stuff. And we know like Bothell shows up for these things. Like every time we have an event down here, like it is very well attended. Like we know our community likes this already. We've had a bunch of this type of event. So I, I like the proposal as written. And like ultimately, we up here on the dais, we are not experts in this kind of thing. And we have a proposal from a company that is an expert. And I'd rather go with their recommendations, especially when their proposal is so clearly encapsulated what we're looking for. Like they heard us, they understand what we want. I don't want to micromanage them. And because I, like they know how to do this better than I am. Like come throw us a cool party. Like we need people who know how to throw cool parties. So, and like again, the way we do it this year doesn't have to be the way we do it forever. So I like the proposal as written. Like we got a cool vendor, let them cook and let's see what happens. And let's make decisions after this year on what happens moving forward. Councilmember Aldrich.
I realize this is not a council conversation, but I, I have answers to questions that have been asked. Or at least want to encourage the community to like reframe the question around data. Like it, it may not be easy to calculate like how much sales tax is brought in on the night of one of these events. But I do know that speaking to business owners that are open in the area when these events are going on, same with like the Saturday markets and, and the, you know, Friday night events that we've been doing, they're busy. Like we are bringing, like we are benefiting our business community by bringing thousands of people into the city and, and hanging out in downtown Bothell and just making it a place where people want to spend time. And so we are benefiting our local business community by doing this. And I do think that, you know, ultimately that does come back to us in the form of sales tax. But to what the mayor said about creating a sense of community and, and meeting our, like our expression and our desire for a joyful and healthy way of life, like this is that. And, and I am glad to see that we can benefit our business community and see them thriving as, as we bring, as people come into the community for, for these events.
My only complaint about these events is how long, the events we do down here is how long it takes me to get some nachos at Julio's because they're so busy. Councilmember Mankie.
Yeah, I just wanted to, I mean, reiterate and caution, like there is an opportunity cost to this and it is not just found money. And we, we have been making a lot of investments in community space. As we are investing a lot EF&amp;G very recently, we're investing in affordable housing with the donation of a multimillion dollar piece of property. So I just want to caution council, there's a lot of interest in spending and we are doing that. And I know there's more that is going to be, want to be done, including an unfunded mental health thing that we're funding right now that's going to be coming due soon because our money is running out. So, you know, there's an opportunity cost and we really need to consider that and keep that top of mind. It's great to have fun. It's great to go out on a, you know, a Saturday night and hang with your friends and, and have all the fun. But there are other needs that need to be considered as well. So just want to make sure that's apparent, want to make sure that's stated publicly and I'm not against fun. But there's, there's many uses for money and we need to be judicious with how we do that, especially when we're considering addition of businesses and transportation and things like that to raise more funds.
All right. Well, I think that's about it. I really appreciate staff sending this out, taking this, really appreciate it. I am super excited about this. And I'm also super excited that we're not going to have to sacrifice any of our obligations to our community, our really important ongoing responsibilities. This is something that we get to do on top of those things. And thanks to staff, especially in the finance department, who have made it so that we can do that. So, thanks y'all.
Mayor, just before we move on, I just, just so we have, expectations are clear as this comes back. There was a mix in terms of the feedback around whether or not to scale or not. In fact, there was, I think, more to scale than not to, and we weren't looking for a vote. So I think what staff discretion will be is, is we work with the vendor is to see if, if there's some, if there's options or as they discuss the scope of work, perhaps there's something to look at. We'll, we'll go into it with presumption of keeping the scope as it was, but also as, if there's any trade-offs or if anything new comes up, if there's, you know, something that's going to dramatically increase or decrease the cost, staff will be cognizant of that. But again, this contract's going to come back to council for approval. So you'll have another, you'll, you'll have a chance to vote on it. I just wanted to say again, we'll, we'll work within what we heard and we'll go back and take notes. The other thing, hear the, hear the conversation about data, I think that's important. There is, I think, much like after the first year that Summer Nights took place with the six-week series, there was a debrief with council. I think we should expect to come back to you in the fall and share what we heard. I think one of the themes that I heard from the council discussion was, one of the advantages that we have in this case is that we are contracting with a vendor who does types of, these types of events or other types of events professionally. And so I think we could also engage with them of defining what success looks like because I guarantee you they're having that conversation. Because if they're, if they're committing to a year, they're probably thinking about, would we do this again? And they'll have some measures. So I think we can work with them on that. And then also in the conversation, Councilmember Aldrich brought up around, around the conversation with data. But one of the things that you mentioned, I think, would be a great data point, which would be the outreach to the downtown businesses. I think we're committed to reaching out to downtown businesses before the first event, but certainly during the process too, to see what the impact has been, if it's positive or negative. And we'll plan on sharing that feedback back with council as well. So I think we got what we need. We'll, we'll go have this conversation. I'm also confident that much like the vendor listened to the October 1st conversation, they're probably aware of this conversation. We'll see where things land. We'll negotiate something. We'll be bringing back a contract very soon.
And I'd just love to ask for some clarification because I heard a bunch of people say they would be open to having a conversation about scaling, but I don't know that I heard everybody say, yes, we should scale. And to me, those are two very different things.
So, like, Nick?
So I, I guess I would propose to, I would propose to do an option A, which would be to move forward with as, as planned. And then an option B, we'll talk to them and see if there's an opportunity. What would it look like if we scaled it back a little bit? That would at least would give you the opportunity to kind of take a look at what that might look like and make a decision. But I, I think we can have that conversation during those negotiations and bring that back to you and you can make an informed decision.
Are there four people who want to scale it back? Or is that?
What, what I captured was Councilmember Kurd, Councilmember Mankie, Councilmember Aldrich and Councilmember Zorn. And the range in that was anywhere between six to eight to eight to 12.
Okay, yeah.
I just think about the end of the school year for families, you know, graduations and everything that's going on that if we were to do the full 15 weeks, that it would be better served if it was at the other end of the, you take that and you bump it to the other end. Yeah, just shifted to run in, run through September. The perk is you've got students now who aren't studying for finals, who are new to campus and want to explore the city that they're in. And the weather's really, you know, guaranteed to be a lot, lot more friendly. But I also like the idea of, what, what were you mentioning?
Did you just say the weather is guaranteed?
Well, pretty much. I, I have to tell you, I go through this, I'm just going to, I go through, September is a bitter time for me because the days are shorter, but the weather's warm and nice. And I'm so conflicted because I enjoy the warm weather, but if I want to go on a day hike, I got to realize the sun's setting before eight o'clock. So, so anyway, I just, I, I love that, that our Septembers are pretty warm and pretty guaranteed to be good as opposed to, you know, late spring. But also I would like the information of if they were to scale it back to 12 weeks, 10 weeks, 12 weeks, what would that, if they were interested in it, what would that look like? Just to have that as a comparison.
I guess what I'm, what I'm nervous about and what I'm getting at is if the vendor is watching this after we sent out something saying, here is what we're looking for. And they sent us back an RFP that is like, here is what you are looking for. And now we go to them and say, well, what about something else? When we defined the terms, so like I just, I, I would, I would love us to be able to give the vendor confidence that like we're still interested in what we sent the RFP out for.
I agree. And I think it sounds like there's an option A and option B. The only option A1 is what would it take to shift instead of shrink? That's the, the question that I think.
I.
We can have the conversation when the contract comes back, I guess.
I mean, and if we're going to do that, I would also like to ask them what it would be like to expand to September as well.
Option C.
I think, I think the benefit of this is that now we'll get into the conversation with the vendor. And so we'll find, we'll find these things out. And again, if there's any, I hear, hear aloud, loud and clear, if there's anything that jeopardizes the agreement based on saying we want to amend anything, then let's not pursue that. So I think, I think Nick, Nick's proposal of, well, we'll talk to them about a couple of options, see what it looks like. And to the director's comment earlier of sometimes if you scale things back, the costs go up. So if that, if the net effect is, it's net neutral, then that gives us direction as well.
Okay, perfect. Thank you guys very much. All right, I skipped council committee reports, community reports and conversations earlier. Amy, thank you. So we're going to go back to that and give you guys an opportunity to speak.
Can we just go?
Oh yeah, sorry. Yes. Councilmember Dodd.
Final reminder, that's Snohomish County Cities and Towns' first meeting of the year where we appoint all the people to all the boards that they appoint things to is Thursday. So if you want to, we all have emails about this. I'm not going to try to get all the acronyms right out of my memory. But if you would like to be on a regional board or committee or commission through Snohomish County Cities and Towns, you should be there on Thursday and you should probably email Don Schwab from Everett before that to get on the ballot. But you can volunteer at the meeting. And then second plug, after Councilmember Aldrich and I spoke last week about the NUSA awards, which are a week from tomorrow.
Councilmember Kurd.
Thanks. I attended SCA, which is the King County Cities Group Public Issues Committee, PIC, on the 8th last week. And at the meeting, sort of a general meeting, but one of the things that was of note was adoption of the legislative agenda to be forwarded to SCA Board, which is meeting tomorrow. So I voted in the affirmative for that because it very much mirrors our own legislative agenda. I think we should probably end up sharing our legislative agenda with, with PIC and the SCA just to get it on their, their sites so that they are working in concert with their city jurisdictions and members. Thanks.
I'll, I'll note just for a quick follow-up, that your final legislative agenda has been shared with, with Sound Cities Association. I do know they've had some staffing transitions, so I'll follow up and make sure they have it in hand.
That is perfect. Thank you.
Do we ever analyze where these groups that, that we're a part of them, like SCA, not to pick on yours, SCC too, if they have a legislative agenda, which has never come up, where they differ from our legislative agenda?
Ideally, at the PIC meeting, we vote against, if there's one city, like one of the founding things about SCA is that no city can trample on the rights of another city. That can be construed certain ways, right? But at PIC, one of the duties of my role there is to ensure that the things that are coming down through SCA's like wider body get run through our own eyes and see if there's any, any challenging terminology or words that we don't necessarily agree with. In that case, I would probably vote no.
Okay.
So I don't know if there's a similar thing in Snohomish County Cities. There's not. That's interesting.
Yeah.
So I'm not aware either of that word, of, of a broad review. It's certainly something we can look at though.
I'm just curious. Sometimes I wonder what, this is an oversimplification, but what are we accidentally advocating for? That's against our, our shared values. But I imagine it doesn't happen too often either.
Yeah, and that's where, you know, with the legislative agenda itself, we keep ours fairly narrow, as do many organizations, to, to really advocate for what are the most important things. So in that, like there's going to be themes that you probably see that are consistent. I think getting into, for us and other agencies that do a policy manual that have a little bit more nuance, I think that might be a little, a little tougher to reconcile across the many organizations. But we could certainly take a look at what themes are being advocated for in our region and kind of expand that out a little bit more. I wouldn't, I don't know that I'm ready to, to volunteer for across all of King County and Snohomish County, but we could, we could try, we could do a sampling.
Yeah, and I don't mean like, like other cities, like let's pick on other cities that start with B and see what they're doing, like across King and Snohomish County, like that could get hairy, like more of the county things that we're, or, you know, the East Side this, or the South Snohomish County that's, or whatever it is. But it's also not a priority. It was kind of an idle thought during this idle thought time.
It's an interesting one, especially with the regional partnerships and the value of that. And maybe it kind of, if you ever get to the point of where you wonder if we need to scale up or down, that might be helpful. And I'd want to know what Premerton does as well, so.
There you go.
One thing I learned at AWC is that there are a lot of cities in this state that start with the letter B, more than you would expect. But I do have updates from some of our regional partnerships. So I would like to get back to that part of the agenda and share about the East Side Human Services Forum meeting last Thursday. The organization is currently between executive directors at this time and in sort of repositioning themselves and understanding like what the purpose and, and duty of the forum going forward, they're looking to learn from other human services coalitions in the area. they're looking to learn from other human services coalitions in the area, including, like, our other human services coalition that we work with, NUSA. And that took up, that was sort of the majority of our meeting, but also a letter is going out to council members that are serving in each of the East Side cities that are part of the forum around the legislative agenda, which you should have already received in your email. And at the East Side Transportation Partnership on January 10th, we had, there was a legislative update, especially around transportation funding, that is going to be a major topic at the legislature this session. And we also had a brainstorming group activities for 2025. So what are some of the topics that East Side cities would like to learn about, talk about in 2025 around transportation? So that's what I've got on my updates. Thank you.
I wanted to follow up with the city manager on something we heard in public comment today, talking about transportation impact fees. You know, if we have transportation impact fees that are high enough that they prevent development, we are costing ourselves money with those transportation impact fees and we're losing some vibrancy as well. So I would just, if you could, city manager, follow up with me offline or like, have a schedule a conversation later this week to kind of talk about what some of those ramifications look like and what flexibility would look like, I'd love to have that conversation.
Yeah, Mayor, just briefly, with the next item before you being the consent calendar, item B on the consent calendar is an amendment, the third amendment with fair and peers for consulting services to support implementation of the 2024 Imagine Bothell Comprehensive Plan. As noted in the agenda bill on page 33 of your packet, there's a listing of what are the items, the policy items coming out of the comprehensive plan that have been committed to being looked at as we enter into 2025. And transportation impact fees is one of the five that are listed. So that is work that is going to be taking place and being brought back to council. So in effect, your first action step that you can take to continue on the journey that was started in the comprehensive plan is when you consider the consent calendar tonight. So you'll be action-oriented.
Lovely. And in case the gentleman that came and spoke to us is still watching, do we have any idea what kind of timeline we're looking at for decisions on those?
He met with our community development department as well as our economic development coordinator earlier, last week or this week, and discussed, they discussed all of those options. The timelines, I think, are things that he is, I don't know that there's any commitment, I think he's just looking and trying to scope out what options are, but he is definitely educating himself about what we're doing and what his options are. So they're in contact and supporting his effort.
Perfect. I meant timeline in terms of legislation coming back to us for a decision potentially as we look at those with.
Yeah, they had discussed that, and so he was, yeah, they had discussed that with him, and I knew he was informed of that.
Perfect.
And I confirmed that right at the break, too.
Fantastic, thank you.
I don't know why I pointed to where I was standing.
You know, I point places too, like, sometimes it feels like the right thing to do. Just going like Uncle Sam style here. All right. I would love to entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda, Councilmember Kurt.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Kurt and a second from Councilmember Aldrich to approve the consent agenda. Would anybody like to speak to the motion? That question is rhetorical. City Clerk.
Thank you. Please say yes or no. Councilmember Zorn?
Yes.
Mayor Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember Aldrich?
Yes.
Councilmember Kurt?
Yes.
Councilmember Manki?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Alcabra?
Yes.
Passes seven zero.
Thank you very much. All right, next up, we have a study session, and I'll introduce the next topic down there. All right, welcome back. Same council, fun new way to arrange ourselves. Our study session is Agenda Bill 25013, the Preferred Conceptual Design of the Park at Bothell Landing. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. And this is an evening of a few status updates about council priorities. And so again, one of them was around getting moving on the Park at Bothell Landing. So tonight's a significant milestone of conceptual design. Again, that doesn't mean that we start building a park tomorrow, but it's definitely, it's a good opportunity to get concepts. And I know there's been a number of public outreach, open houses, and different efforts that a number of people who participated in our meeting tonight were a part of. So we're gonna hear more details about that. I'm gonna turn things back over to Aaron Milner tonight, who is overseeing this work as our capital projects lead in the Parks and Recreation Department. So Aaron, take away.
Thank you, City Manager Standard. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council. I'm here today, I'm Aaron Milner, I'm the Parks Planning and Development Manager alongside with Director Stroop. We're here today also with Vanita Sidhu, she's Principal at Site Workshop Landscape Architecture. And we have Ryan Storkman with us as well from our consultant team at Site Workshop Landscape Architecture. So we are here this evening to provide an update to the Park at Bothell Landing conceptual design project. So as you all know, park improvements to the Park at Bothell Landing are a priority within the 2040 council vision. Essentially, as a first step in this process and achieving this initiative, we've worked with our community to create a preferred conceptual design for the Park at Bothell Landing. This is essentially an update to the existing 2010 master plan for the park, and it will be the basis for all design and construction moving forward. So during the study session, you'll get a quick summary of our engagement process. Vanita here will walk you through the preferred conceptual design, will provide you a draft cost estimate as well as a potential phasing plan for construction. So we look forward to hearing from council any question or feedback you may have on the project. So really quickly, our engagement process, we broke this into three different phases. The learn phase was the first phase of this project, where we really just were looking to understand the site, the existing conditions, and our overall community's vision for the park. We took this information and developed three distinct alternative designs within the explore phase. We took this back to our community to gather feedback, as well as took it to the council and our park board for feedback as well. We're currently wrapping up the decide phase here, where we have a preferred conceptual design in hand. This is a synthesis of those earlier phases of the project. And we are, we hosted, in November, we hosted a public open house where we gathered feedback from our community to make sure that we were on the right track with this vision, as well as presented this in front of our park board, who voted unanimously to move this project forward, this concept forward for design. So I do, so in total, we had seven public events, two online surveys, several touchpoints with our council and park board. Our park board was really intimately involved in all phases of this project. They actually helped us facilitate all these open houses. It actually provided great insight to our community's vision for this park, as well as provided an informed decision for the recommendation to move this concept forward. So, yeah, I guess before I turn it over to Vanita, I do want to emphasize this is a conceptual design. It is a concept. As we move forward through the design phase, there is likely some minor modifications to this plan. And then I also want to reiterate, our intent in Parks and Recreation is to move directly into the design phase of this project. So with that, I'll hand it over to Vanita.
Thanks, Aaron. Is that, that's good? Okay. We've been asked to keep the presentation brief, so I'm gonna stay high level, but I welcome questions afterwards if there's anything you want me to explain in more detail. You know, coming out of the alternatives, what really rose to the top in our engagement process was an interest to maximize activities and opportunities, especially considering youth. And, you know, we have a skate park in the project, we had a lot of great people that were here today, show up for a workshop. We've also heard from a lot of community members that aren't here today. And some of the most important elements that came out of that process are displayed here, and those include that water features a central plaza, that was a very popular element, improving physical and visual access to the river, everybody loves the river, that's one of the main reasons they come here, continuing to improve the trail network and that connectivity into downtown and to adjacent places for all modes of, you know, bicycles. And well, you've got micro mobility being studied, so we could think of all those people that will be using these trails as well. Really thinking about accessibility at a high level and a very inclusive play area. So, but inclusion is something that, you know, is an overlay, I think, across the whole park, you know, all ages, all abilities, seniors, whatnot. And in order to have all the program that's in here, you know, the parking lot is limited to one area, and that really rose out as the best approach. People wanted to prioritize program over creating big parking facilities. I will, let's flip to the next, we have a series of three slides where we break the park into three parts, so I could speak specifically to each of these regions as we've referred to them. These do not represent phases, we'll end with a slide that suggests a potential way to phase the project. So at the east edge of the park, there's currently, this is the area that's currently the large gravel parking area, and you have a driveway coming in from the state route. So really, it's taking a part of the park that is heavily vehicular oriented and turning it into a totally pedestrian and recreation facility area. The skate park is a big focus element there. We, in our last workshop, we presented this plan and we got some great feedback on it. And, you know, as Aaron said, this is a concept design. The next level of design is going to include bringing in teammates that are going to make sure each of these elements are, you know, well detailed, well designed, and that includes a skate park consultant, for example. With adjacent to that skate park, we have a large lawn area, there was some interest in considering that as synthetic turf to make it really all year, so that's something else we're considering and have as a line item in our cost estimate. A pump track was a program element that came up from the Parks Board and some community members, and we have held space for that. Right now, as we're showing this sort of skate park area and pump track area, I think as we move forward into design development, there's right sizing, all of that will be something we'll be putting a lot of thought into. We expect more workshops to, in, you know, engagement in the design development phase as well. We know there's strong community interest. This part of the park, we also have creating a small entry plaza at the far east end, and the location of that is associated with, there is the existing bridge over the state route that we know is being studied for upgrade and improvement to the ramp system that comes off of that. So really thinking of this as a prominent entry point in the future, looking ahead to all those associated improvements, and creating a viewpoint along the River Trail there as well. Picnicking, small picnic shelters are located throughout the park, in this case, we have a few, all in association with the skate park and pump track. Things like, we have not shown a roof yet, but I think if that is something that really rises up as an important element over something like the skate park, we'll definitely look at that. Lighting is not drawn, but there, we have allowed for lighting as an important element throughout the park as an allowance in the cost estimate. Next slide. Central part of the park, so this is, you know, one of the main places where you would enter the park as a pedestrian coming across the state route. We just wanted to highlight that we're proposing a really nice buffer along the state route that includes using both topography entries and vegetation to create some visual and to some extent, a little bit of auditory barrier from the state route, and some depth, so that once you kind of pass down and through the landscape, you'll feel more in a park and separated from that state route. Central plaza with a water feature, pavilion associated with it is that curved element, new restroom building, bicycle facilities, allowing space for places to have food trucks and events and all the different great things that are happening in different ways in the park right now. Amphitheater continued to be something that people, you know, but definitely, we heard the events are popular, we want to make sure we can support them, and have been looking specifically at ways to even improve those opportunities. So increasing lawn space adjacent to the amphitheater, creating a new stage deck at the water's edge to support performances and open up that space more. The historic buildings are something a lot of people highlighted as one of the things they love about having within this park and just love about Bothell. So we have both talked with community members, and we went and had a preliminary meeting with the Landmarks Board, got their feedback on various things that would improve these buildings, including accessibility upgrades, so everybody can get inside these buildings to, you know, current codes. We are proposing a shift, a relocation of the Buckstrom Cabin that was supported by the Landmarks Board, that is primarily to open up space all around the amphitheater for more space for events. We'll have another slide on the Lidle House where I'll touch on that in more detail. And then on the west end, a new building that where kayak and stand-up pedalboard rentals would happen, including inclusive restrooms adjacent to, you know, that bean shape is an inclusive play area, improved access for hand-carried boat launch or sups or whatever people are using in the river, more picnic facilities and the parking area, which utilizes the existing driveways who are coming in at that existing intersection, and then aligning a new parking area with that, including some load unload area, knowing that a lot of people will be dropping off here. Next slide. The Lidle House is one of those items that I'd say isn't fully resolved on what the approach is. We've priced a few different options, and I'll get into that in the next slide. We talked about it quite a bit with the Landmarks Board. That drawing down below shows when this building was moved here, that red dash outline shows the original structure, that was the original form of the Lidle House. Two additions were made in 1984, basically, you know, changing the character of the building, and you can't really see what that structure was. From the Landmarks Board point of view, they support restoring back to the original structure in different ways, but they also recognize that that comes at a lot of cost and that if the city were interested in replacing the structure, they would consider removing. removal of that building, you know, an acceptable option. We've, the Lidle Lift and Lidle Add, you could see are two potential iterations. It's always counterintuitive, but sometimes lifting a building can be more affordable than you might think. So each of those, the Lidle Lift and Add, takes the building back to its original structure, then creates new program space to support the community room function, which we know is, is still very popular and people want to have that, and also Parks Department offices. So the overall cost estimate, it's, it's a big number. I just want to highlight a few things here. We've, because we are at the early concept design phase, it's built in a large estimating, design and estimating contingency. That's kind of standard practice. When you're early in design, we want to make sure we account for things that are not drawn yet or we, you know, have not fully understood at this point. We also have escalation included to capture, you know, rising construction costs with a soon start of spring 2027. If the project were to push out further than that escalation, you have to, would keep going up. The right-hand side there, we have some items that we had them priced separately, just so we had those as separate costs. The three different approaches to the Lidle House and changing that lawn, that roundish lawn area to the synthetic turf. So we know that phasing is something that might be a way to build this project over time. If funding, you know, if you aren't able to fund it for construction at one time. This phasing approach is, is based on some of what we heard as the project priority. So I would say if you were to look just at Phase One and Phase Two, those are some of the items that we feel like really have risen to the top, but also looking at logical construction boundaries, because, you know, you, you're not going to build little bits in different parts of the project. There's efficiency in building in one zone and also just thinking about, you know, how we're, you kind of work your way out of the park with Phase Four being a logical last phase, because with that, you lose that second vehicular access point. You've got your new parking built in Phase One and Two, and, and so Phase Four is easier to happen at that point. These boundaries could obviously be adjusted. We, we didn't have, we don't have a defined, this is how much construction funding we have, but so this is a, a suggestion on one way to approach it.
So with that, we'll open it up to any questions or comments.
Thank you for the presentation. That, like, this is obviously like a super exciting topic. Like, I feel like sometimes probably you have presentations, you're like, oh, no, but hopefully this one was fun for you guys, too. Maybe not in Parks and Rec as often as other departments. So I did want to ask a few things. When we, when we look at just having like a little bit less parking, is, do we have the option to really load a little more, like more ADA spots than would be required to make sure that folks who have accessibility concerns are parking on that side of the highway versus walking across from other parking?
Yeah, and in fact, we did that because code requirement for sixty-three stall parking lot, I think three is what you would be required to do. We're, we're showing more here. I mean, you, you can put in as many accessible parking stalls as you want, really. That's your yeah, at your, I mean, more than the minimum.
Not mine, which is why I'm asking, but yeah, I just, I, it's something that I thought of. I just want to make sure that we were thinking about that. And then the other stuff I thought of before I listened to everyone and get more ideas. When, with phasing, like, let's say Phase One is going on, could people still access like the existing playground while Phase One is being built?
Yeah, I mean, that was part of the phasing thought, too, is that this, this is a very popular park, you know. If it were all closed off at one time, that, that might be unhappy.
So, yeah. Okay, awesome. And then with the Lidle House, I had written down, will the Lidle House be available to like rent or reserve after the park is relaunched? And then we got to that slide. I think, nothing jumps out at me. I think I would like for all of, like, let's have the needs that we want to get out of that space and then evaluate how each of the options kind of meets it, like. I, I know that, and I am like quoting people who are quoting people, like, I, it's been a while since I looked at reserving it, and you can't right now, is my understanding. But I know, like, some events weren't allowed because of worrying about, like, damaging the, the wooden floors and other stuff, like, I think we are, we have a shortage of indoor, like, event and rental space, really. And that's one of the prettier options, to be frank. So I wouldn't want to lose an indoor space, but I would love a space that lets more things happen without, like, those concerns with like a valuable historical building in play. Like, I get it, but I think it's maybe not quite doing everything we could maybe hope from a space right there in the park. So that's kind of my thoughts there. Thank you.
Can I jump in? I think I've been to probably, if not all, most of the open houses, and it's just been fun to watch this collective mind work on a project that there's a lot to love about it. So thank you for, for listening and bringing your expertise into this. I appreciate you talking about right sizing, because I looked at the pump track in the skate park and I went, that doesn't look, I have a terrible spatial ability, but I was, I was like, that doesn't look like you could really do much. So thank you for mentioning that. And then I have a, a few questions. I understand that the water feature, I've seen this done in other cities where the water feature kind of reflects the geology around the area. And so there's some talk about the water feature reflecting the slough. Is that right? Love that idea. And then there's some things that I really held dear to my heart, and I'm not, I'm just not going to say what they are, but you put them in here, and that made me so happy. In fact, I cried happy tears when I saw that we were going to be talking about this. It was, it was very timely. I do have a question about safety. You said that there's going to be lighting. The two questions that go through my mind is that, you know, after hours, and we're, and we have our officers patrolling and doing their swoops through, are sightlines figured in to them being able to just kind of get a scan of the park and see what kind of activity is going on in the park?
Yeah, I mean, I would say that, as you can probably tell, we have, we haven't done any lighting layout.
Right, 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 right. But you're thinking about that.
But we are, we know that this is a place where you have events and a place where more activities are happening at night than maybe some other parks.
Oh, no, it's a favorite place when even when fireworks are, you know, people find good places to go hide and ignite fireworks. It's, it's a great A lot of people love that for a lot, that park for a lot of different reasons. Another question is, is there a place for, I was looking at the skate park and thinking, if someone had to call nine-one-one and get medics to come down here, is there a place where they, is, is there a place where they would be able to pull in? You know, I'm thinking of emergency, emergency services as their, besides that parking lot, is there other ways for emergency services to get into the park if they needed to?
So one thing we've been planning and, you know, at some point as we move forward, we'll, we'll diagram this, but a space here where vehicles and, and this is partly, you know, thinking about maintenance routes would have a flush connection with probably removable bollards and designing pathways that are vehicular strength. We have allowed for that in our cost estimate. Not every single pathway, but that, you know, the plaza that we would have a way for, and, and some of that, too, was event things like food trucks coming onto that plaza. But, yeah, I mean, emergency services. Yeah, it's something that often comes, I, I have worked on athletic fields quite a bit, too, so that's often comes up with sports fields. You need to have a, you know, be able to get an ambulance to that sports field. I haven't had that question specifically on a skate park, but I guess that makes sense.
Where the, you know, where there's more risk-taking is happening furthest away from the parking lot. How, if, and if someone needed help, how could we get help?
Yeah, and that's something we can, we can study, those turning movements.
Okay, so.
And one thing I just wanted to point out, because, and on the skate park extents, and, and we did get really good feedback when we, at our last workshop, we did have this idea about like a, there's a big bowl and then more street skate elements and sort of a trail idea with planting on either side. We definitely heard from the skater community that they have a lot of concern with the debris that would come off of trees and planting areas adjacent to skating areas, but so what might not be really clear is that the skateable area is really this, a relatively big footprint. It certainly can keep growing a bit eastwards if, if we're thinking the skate park wants to be a bigger element. And, and this area here is what we had designated as pump track area. And then in here are trails with different stations that were meant to be kind of nature-based exercise stations.
And you need to remember the barbecue.
Barbecue, yes, yes. And we do, we do have barbecue, so, yeah.
And then the other thing is that I love the inclusive playground very, 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 very much, and that it's for all ages. I have a however. I have a however.
Yeah.
In that, in wellness parks for senior citizens. You know, we talk about Bothell wanting to be a place of belonging where you see that there's a place for you. There is equipment that is geared for adults and working on their mobility and strength and that sort of thing. And so my question is, this is, I'm going to be so grateful that if we can get all of this in as it is. However, if we could, if there were spaces identified where fundraisers could happen, you know, a GoFundMe, where we could put a, I mean, if you go look at wellness parks and what those equipment, that equipment looks like, you know, put a pad where, because we have a lot of seniors that live in Bothell and a lot that live within a walkable different distance across, across the slough there. Where they would, where if we were to do a GoFundMe and put two or three pieces of equipment scattered in the park where the community could fund it, but there would be a place for it to go, I would just think that now we've got a park for everybody.
Yeah.
So. Do you want to come feed a question in my ear? Come feed a question in my ear and I'll ask it. Oh, oh, and then, yeah. Yeah, Cal, yes, I think the, I think the slough has like, along the, the trail, there's like, where you can do chin-ups and that, but that, but that way you could do. But, yeah, there's, there's, if you look at wellness parks, there's, there's equipment that's specific for seniors where they can get in there and lengthen their strides or work on their balance and, and if there's a couple places where the community could come in and put those in later, that would be fantastic. But overall, I don't want to touch this. You guys have got a great, great planning, plan going on here, so thank you.
It's a dream come true, honestly, to, to be at this point in the process, after hearing from so many members of our community and to see this design. It really is, it's a work of art and it's just a concept. So thank you for bringing us to this point. I have some thoughts. I am supportive of expanding the skate park so that it can host competitions. I really think that, from what I've heard, like North Bend, Leavenworth are sort of like how far people have to go for those types of events, and Bothell is really well situated at like, I, you know, I like to think of at the top of five, at the top of the lake and connected to Eastside, close to Seattle. It makes a lot of sense, especially since we have such a vibrant, like, hotel community in the area. And we really are seeking to like create destinations so that people want to travel and visit Bothell. And I think that that is the type of, type of event space that there is clearly a demand for in our community. I, you know, I can't say that I know a whole bunch about skateboarding beyond the community who's come and, and spoken to us, but I do enjoy watching it at the Olympics. And just to think, you know, it's, it's amazing to think that there are local, local skaters who got their start here, and we're missing those, those facilities at this point in our history. And so I think bringing them back and then creating something where, and it's not just the skate park, but it's also the pump track. Those events really draw people in, and I'd like, I, I think that we have the potential to do that here, and I think we should like take advantage of the opportunity and, and really build that. So that means I am also supportive of, or at least interest. The roof idea or the covering idea is appealing to me. Although I, and somebody can educate me about this, I do wonder about like, like videoing if you have a roof, like, does that change how you can, like sightlines and what you can see? But that's, we'll talk. And then I, I do like the idea of lighting, especially for safety, especially when it gets dark at four-thirty. Nobody loves that, especially, you know, if we're talking about kids after school. It's, it's dark after, right after school. The, the Lidle House conversation is really interesting to me. I would not have known if you had not told me that the, that that was from nineteen eighty-four. It is historic at this point. You know, eighty-four was a, a very special vintage year. It was the year I was born.
I'm not ready for historic buildings from after I was born. Like, I feel very attacked right now.
I don't remember it. What was it like?
Read the book.
Misinformation. Okay, so I, yeah, I, apparently that is not the way the historical building looked. I, I like the building as it is, and so this is sort of a, like, I was, I was curious about this slide when I saw it, and so I really, I think I need some time to digest it. But seeing this lift concept is really interesting to me because it reminds me of the old Center for Human Services building around one-eighty-four, hundred and third over there. Because downstairs, they were able to convert the basement into like a preschool where play and learn classes were held for families. And when that building was sold and Center for Human Services moved out, we lost those, like, play and learn groups in the community. And I know many, many families benefited from that. And so there's just a little part of me that sees the potential for, like, play and learn groups to exist in that space again. And then have like, you know, after school and like, all, like the, well, we are talking about building a community center, too, but be, being able to bring back the, like, classes and workshops and things and be able to have those upstairs. I'm concerned that if we reduce the footprint of that building to, back to its, like, original historical size, that we would lose the ability to have those classes and workshops. And that it might, that those, those might not fit in that space, which is, I think, partly the reason why the expansions took place. And because I'm just thinking out loud here, I guess I'm saying, what if we kept the, we improved the, the, like, footprint that it is and lifted it? Is that an option? Am I thinking too big? And you can tell me to stop. And, and then, so when it comes down to the cost for the community, I think I was, I was scared that it was going to be more than this. And so this, you know, twenty-nine million dollars might seem like a lot, but then I remember that, that the city spent forty-seven million dollars on building City Hall. And, and this park is absolutely more of a, a hub for our community and an engagement spot, but I feel like it's actually a really More of a hub for our community and an engagement spot, but I feel like it's actually a really good deal financially to invest into this park. When we look at what we have invested into, you know, running the government. And I'm not discounting the importance of running the government, I'm just saying parks are super important for people. For the broader community and are engaged with by more members of the community than even our city hall is. So.
Can I just, on the Lidl House, I would say. Yes, theoretically, you could lift the entire structure and build below. I, I think if you were thinking about going that much bigger with the building, I'd probably recommend replacing it. Because frankly, it's lost its historic value and. With the additions and, you know, we heard that from Landmarks Board and generally that's, it's really surprising those additions were allowed back in nineteen eighty-four. Because if you went through any project through a landmarks board right now, it's, it's kind of a obvious no, no, don't look. Don't make fake history. But there, as a new structure. We are in setbacks from the river, we'll have to, we'd have to study this, but we could look at what, what would be the maximum. A nice building, of course, something that looks good and appropriate that you can get in that space.
Yeah, okay, thank you for that. I think that that's a, a more involved conversation and that we would need more information to talk about it. I, yeah, I didn't even realize that there was an option of making changes to the house when we started this process, so this is kind of new to me. I, I realized I skipped a slide in my comments here, I went out of order. And so on the west region slide, when we're talking about the play. The play beach, I think it's a really fantastic idea and we, and it is really great to have, have a play beach. But this is a community that's not used to playing in the river here. Is it safe to play in the river there?
I looked up the water quality once, cause I was like gonna do a stand up paddleboard and I was like, what if I fall?
Fallen in the river before.
And it is technically safe, I just, I.
Like, we've all been here back when we used to call it the slough, right, like?
I think I, I think I literally reached out to my friendly neighborhood licensed geologist, Carson Curd, LG. And asked about what the, the meter readings meant because it was a little, it was like, you can, but don't do it a lot. Is kind of the, the layman summary of what it said. So I, yeah.
And so I would be looking to our parks department for just making sure that there's adequate staffing. And skill on staff to main, like to check the water quality and to be able to shut it down if it needed to be shut down. Like that happens all, like all of the water around here sometimes gets closed because of algae blooms or whatever. And so I just want to make sure that, that our parks department is prepared to address those concerns as they come up.
We maybe are about to say the same thing, so I'll let you go.
So if, if it's a designated swimming area, that's where we would be doing the water testing. So we, we, at this point, did not intend to have this as a designated swim area. This is just a, a touch point where you could get close to the river. And, and interact, but not necessarily go swimming.
Okay, I, then I might have been misinterpreted the, the design here.
I think our label play beach maybe is confusing, but it, it's. Also kind of one of those sensory experiences, especially for young children to just be able to have a, an edge with, you know, river rocks and different.
If it's open to the water and the skaters are skating and they're sweating like crazy in the middle of August, you know what they're gonna do next? So. So, yeah, I think that, that's a good suggestion, just to look more into, into that, that piece.
Cause it, it's like adding a dimension to our parks department that we never, that we haven't really had before. If people are going to be, you know, waiting in the water, swimming, that kind of thing. If it is a play beach and there is a separation, like there's not access to the water there. I'd wanna, I'd wanna better understand what that design looks like. And then that does kind of set my heart at ease a little bit as the parent of kids on the autism spectrum. Because autistic kids and water are a dangerous combination because they are so very, very drawn to water. And it, so it's just making sure that like when we are providing water access to our community that we're doing it in a safe manner. Especially since, you know, I, I don't see any intention here to have like lifeguards around. And, you know, I, like, I was the parent who wanted my kids to be in water, just safely, just safe. And, and so I, I do have, you know, I think fleshing out that concept, that idea, that plan, that design would, would clarify some of, I think, the questions. And, and maybe like misunderstandings that might be around that. And then other than that. Part of, when I, my first reaction in looking at the phasing plan was, why do we have to wait for phase four? Couldn't it be phase three? Couldn't we like leave the historic district and the pavilion, the amphitheater? Cause like that's already well loved, familiar, like everybody loves it, it's not gonna change the most, could we save that for the last? And you can tell me for all the reasons why I'm wrong.
Well, I won't tell you why you're wrong, but I will tell you that, that the other reason for phase four sort of being on that eastern edge. Is that that is also within the cleanup area, so we're continuing to do the studying of the soils and, you know, the treating of that. So we know that it's going to be a little bit further out before that we're able to sort of work on that corner. And, and so that was just our thought process, not only that, we talked earlier about, you know, allowing that still to be parking. As we were building out the others under construction, so it gives us a little bit more flexibility. But we certainly could look at it if you wanted to go a different direction.
And, and in case it wasn't clear in the color overlays, but the, the, the phase one had the skate park in it. And if that edge were to grow a little bit eastward, that would be possible. And we were thinking also about just the logistics of construction. Because when you have construction going on, especially building, if there were a new building that was going up. You know, part of this includes a new canopy over the amphitheater. You, you've got trucks coming in and out somewhere and how is, how is that gonna happen? And do you want them driving over your new plaza? And, and all of that, so just some of, some of that was the thinking that went into. You, you don't wanna have a place that's landlocked by all new park and as your last construction phase.
That is very practical and I understand. So if I'm understanding you correctly, phase one would include the skate park, but it would not necessarily include the pump track. And so you'd save the pump track to the end.
That, that, yeah.
Okay, that's, that's not a terrible way of looking at it. And then last question I have for you is. So I believe estimated start date is spring twenty twenty-seven, so that's two springs from now. Are you able to at this point put like years on the phases when you would get to each phase? Because I see that there are not years listed on the phases.
I mean, really, we'd just be making it up because we haven't been given, we have this much construction funding coming this year, this much, so.
Just not enough information to say that, okay.
But the, the twenty twenty-seven start is just, there, there is a long permitting timeline. This is a complex permitting process to build on a riverfront park. So, you know, allowing for that time to do all the documentation and detailing and getting through all the permits that will be required. Is, is why that dates. Where it is.
Okay, well, that's all I have, thank you, I really appreciate the, the thought and the answers, thank you.
Thanks for the presentation, really exciting work. I think like millennia from now, where would we want people to excavate our community to find out about the people who lived here? And this is where we'd want that to happen because it's such a critical part of the urban fabric and the, the way that people move through our city. And the way that people use the outdoor spaces, so this is like a generational opportunity to have an impact on the future of our city too. So I'm really grateful that you're looking at it with such a comprehensive lens and really doing a good job of. Coordinating with the community and their needs and desires. That being said, when I looked at this preferred concept plan, I was like overwhelmed, there's a lot going on here. And I want to make sure that we're doing everything the best that we can. And so to that end, I have some things that. We all have things that we want to prioritize, but I have some things that I want to de-prioritize. One of the things that I'm thinking about is the last time you came to us to solicit feedback. I was really curious about tribal input. And I'm wondering if that occurred before this or if you're looking to do that kind of afterwards.
Yeah, that's a good question and sorry, but by trying to do a fast presentation, I did leave out some things like that, so. It's, it's something that has come up a lot from community members. And in looking at the historic, you know, the historic buildings that you have in the park tell the story of a settlement era. And we all acknowledge there's, you know, a much longer history. And there's definitely a lot of interest in making sure that the stories that are told, you know, opportunities. Tell that longer history and while we have not engaged with tribes, one of the things that we have. When we were at the landmarks board, there were some suggestions on how we might go about doing that. I understand one of the. Reasons is complex is because there's about five different tribes that recognize this as their homeland and, and. How do we make those conversations meaningful and actually, you know, not waste their time? Cause you want to respect them. But one of the things we had suggested was, you know, potentially native plant garden and some exhibits. Or, or opportunities, maybe bringing in indigenous artists. And I think that's something we'd wanna definitely talk, you know, with Nick and Aaron as we look forward in this project. And what's the best way to approach this?
Yeah, that's great, I'm, I'm hopeful that, you know, that outreach will continue. One of the themes that I hear a lot from local tribes, federally recognized tribes. Is this sense of like, and I'm not a tribal member and I don't speak for the tribes. But I hear a theme of sort of. Mindful interaction with the natural environment. And so to that end. Not every recreational opportunity for. Like recreational opportunities have an impact on nature. And so I'm, I'm looking at the play beach and I'm thinking that's not really something that might fit in with. Contemporary tribal understanding of recreation, especially when it offers an opportunity to degrade the environment further. I'm really hesitant and worried about how close it is to the inclusive play area. I'm worried about how disgusting the water qual- honestly, how disgusting the water quality is here. And we don't want to encourage anyone to like touch the water. Or swim, I guess, it's weightable, but you know, technically. I, so I'm like, the play beach seems like it's a, an opportunity for maybe a different. Type of recognition of the waters. If we're looking for sensory areas, the water feature could be a, one of those places to really focus those efforts instead. And so, yeah, I'm really, really cautious about including play beach area in, in this. This kind of conceptual plan even. The other thing that I'm thinking about too is like. Our impact on water quality in terms of lawn. While, you know, private lawns with fertilizers and herbicides are bad for water quality. What's, what we're finding even worse is. Tire particulate and plastic particulate coming off of turf fields. And while we've already invested in that, in some of our critical watersheds, I, I think that it's really, I'm, I'm grateful that you. You or whoever is coming up with the conceptual plans heated the, my extreme caution about using dog. Park facilities as close to the water, but just as important is that we don't do loading of, of plastic particulate. This close to the water too, because that would definitely have an impact and it's documented in other places like Longfellow Creek. And West Seattle too, so I'm just really concerned about that. Another concern that I could maybe envision tribes maybe having, and I'm again, not a tribal member and I don't speak for the tribes. But is artificial light at night, so every fish that comes into the watershed passes under the Bothell Bridge. That doesn't, you know, go into a stream earlier on. And so it's really a focus of a lot of salmon recovery efforts in our watershed. To reduce artificial lighting at night on areas like lakes and corridors like this. That's why like, I love the Bothell Bridge and I want it to be like a focus, but I really am against doing lighting at night. That would focus predation by animals. On, on salmon and other migratory fish there. And so any lighting plans, I would really encourage. Shading and really intention around where we would be putting those lighting and like shielding and that sort of thing to make sure that the, the river isn't. Isn't lit at night artificially. There's a lot going on in the eastern part of the park too and it makes sense for the phasing. But when I was thinking about it, I was like, why can't we do either a really awesome skate park or a really awesome pump track? Instead of doing maybe a okay job at both. And so I'm, I'm interested in further plans, I'm interested in, you know, the development of this conceptual plan. And phasing makes a whole lot of sense, especially with some of the contamination issues that aren't gonna be resolved really as soon as. I'm sure we, we'd like to see a skate park, but if it means reducing the lawn area to encourage a skate park. That meets the needs and is kind of that regional or, or greater class. I think that that's a compromise that I'd, I'd like to see, just to make sure that. We have good things that are gonna be used and they're not gonna be like. Excess. Excess pavement on the ground that's not, doesn't really have a use. Other quick thing that I was wondering about was. For water quality, the parking area is, is still big. And while I'd like to see no parking, that's a concession I'm gonna have to make is some, some degree of parking. And I want to know what precedent we have in Bothell for permeable pavement. I know it takes work to maintain and I don't know if the parks department is ready to and willing to like get on board with permeable pavement. But I know that there's some at Centennial Park and I'm just wondering like, is there precedent already to, to do that?
Yeah, I, I, I'll answer that question, but first I would say that we, we will, for any pollution generating surface. We will be doing water quality, that, that's a base requirement of stormwater permitting. And different ways that that might be done from filtera units to fire tension to whatnot. Whether permeable paving is a good idea at this location would be one thing we need to analyze. With our civil engineer consultant and part of that will be geotech work that will happen. And whether, you know, we know that there are places where groundwater is high, are we actually gonna get the infiltration that you'd want? So I, I'd say that's something we can evaluate as we get into the detail level of design, but I can't really answer. Whether it's a good idea here for you right now, I've worked on projects where we've used permeable pavement in parking lots. So I, I know it's possible, but every project has to be kind of vetted for, is it appropriate in this location?
Totally, I love that answer, thank you. Two more quick things and then I'll pass it off. One is the sound design, this came up before when we talked and it came up when I was talking to folks at some of the. Open houses. I like the idea of kind of separating the park from the highway as much as possible, I think that you did a great job with the sort of like intention around grading. I'm also wondering about. Highway noise. So like, I don't, I'm, I'm not a sound engineer by any stretch. But I know that when things are higher than the highway, there's some like natural barrier. But if they're lower than the highway, then that's where we see all of the sound barriers next to the highway. I know that this doesn't necessar- necessitate. I know that this doesn't necessitate a sound barrier. But when we're like sinking the park lower than the highway, is that, are we going to hear more sound from the highway in the park? Or is that something that I'm just like blowing out of proportion?
I'm not sure I want to say I can answer that question. We could, there are acoustical engineers that I've worked with before. So we can certainly like ask that question as and see if there are things we can do. It is a tricky situation because I doubt anybody wants to build a sound very well, as you said.
And then like trees haven't been decided where they're going to go, all this stuff. So I I say it now because if there's grading stuff to be done, that's usually like. Those grading plans come out pretty early compared to like, we're not going to go back and regrade the park after there are stuff there. So I am curious about the auditory aspect of having a gem of a park on highway. That's pretty loud. If you've been out there sign waving ever.
And I just highlight like overall up at the state route, we're at about thirty seven, slightly varying depending on where you are. And once you get down to the river, we're at nineteen. That's the grade change we have across this site. And when we're looking at this, we want all our pathways to be accessible. Really trying to minimize ramps. We haven't shown any stairs to just really avoid barriers. There is some advantage to doing some some of that grade change quickly. Where we're closer to the state route, so there's those that curved arc coming in, those are ramps. So we're we're doing more grade change there and then we get this nice flat plaza. And so that and then we do have to meet grade at certain places like those historic buildings.
I was wondering about this sort of like, why isn't there a desire pathway directly from the bridge to the nearest crosswalk across the street? But it makes sense to have these kind of winding pathways. Cool. Last question, sorry, is the Lidl House? I think it's been echoed and I would just say too that. I would love to see a purpose driven facility there. And if that means removal of the Lidl House, so be it. And also it is possible to have echoes of a historic building. Transposed onto a new like echoes of that design or of those colors of, you know. So I'm, I love the Lidl House. I haven't been here since nineteen eighty four, but I don't know what it looked like before and I I don't care to know. And so I think it's okay to have a really excellent place to gather, which is what the community wants. I think it's a great place to have parks facilities. If this is the gem of the parks, have the parks there too. So, yeah, I'm I'm not really tied to every shingle remaining. Thanks.
Just to jump in really quickly to frame one of the themes there. The executive leadership team was actually meeting last week, talking about some of the status updates around the council priorities. And one of the the themes we talked about was within environmental stewardship. And specifically the council priority to foster relationships and partner with indigenous people native to Bothell. And so we are looking holistically at how do we establish government to government relationships and do that formally? As we then have a purpose to to bring something. So we're we're considering this project as one of the many things that we would have to discuss. But wanting to make sure that we enter into that formally. And and with with that thought around it to fulfill the the priorities set before us. So I just want to call that out too. Think both Nick and I were taking notes of of the comments of a reminder of what some of those early engagements would be. But we are intending of of approaching it in that in that light. So we we hear you and we'll continue that work.
You can catch it on YouTube later.
Like it'll be, it'll be there.
Awesome.
I know, I just wanted to respectfully say I appreciate all of you for your time. You guys are all like you work together well.
Let's learn, like, if you want to interrupt the meeting from the audience, be kind and polite and, you know.
Yeah, and give a sticker.
And share presents.
Right? I'm into that. The first off, thank you. Like, this has been a ton of work and I really appreciate it and it is absolutely fantastic. And I am super excited to go beg somebody for money to eventually build this thing and let our community play in it. And between this and the night markets, like, it's a fun night at council. Like, we get to do fun things tonight, like, we can have fun things. And naturally, you know, it's fantastic and I love it. And now I I have to say like, all the things I'd like to be different. But first a few questions. We talked about a flyover pedestrian walkway eventually over the highway. And it looks like there's space in appropriate places that could potentially accept something like that in the future. Is that something that you've looked at as part of this?
Yeah, it's it's maybe a complicated answer. Yeah, we looked at a number of things. And in fact, we had a great session with your city's transportation planners and and civil types. To discuss a series of alternatives, including, you know, is there a way to even, you know? So a bridge, short answer. A bridge could be possible. It's it'll be crazy expensive. There are a lot of challenges on how you get down it on each end. And that that timing of crossing, while it, I know it's painfully slow to get across the street right now at ground level. You also have to think about the time to, is there an elevator at each side? Or is it a long series of ramps to get down? And that timing was something we've talked about. We talked about, could we lose turn lanes at at one side of the intersection too short in the pedestrian crossing distance? This transportation planner ran some numbers for us actually to just show what the challenges are there. And what it would do to traffic at that intersection, which was not good. We talked, we've also talked about, could a signal be added? So that where we have our now east pedestrian entry, you know? This is a place where there also be a desire line to get across the state route. You're coming into an interesting part of of the town there too. There was, we understand when the state route was being planned. The city advocated for as many signals as possible for as many crossing points. That was a tough battle with Washdod and they didn't win getting a signal there. But we did. Plant that seed or discuss that that is a place that it would be great to advocate for. I mean, it would be a pedestrian crossing only if Washdod would be on board to adding a signal there. That that might be a hard battle to win with them. But then we also know that the bridge to just to the east of the park. Is that it will need to be replaced because it's been hit a certain number of times, unfortunately. And with that, there could be a much better ramp coming down off of it. And, you know, where we landed here is that's going to provide a safe route across the state route. At some point, and it with more activity at that end of the park, while it's not coming right into the center of the park. It is a place for you to connect with downtown and the businesses and shops over there.
And the park and ride.
And the park and ride.
So, no, that was, you answered my next question, which was going to be, so we're going to, we're planning for a new bridge. Like, can we, can we plan for a bridge that gets us easy to walk across? I love that we have lights planned. There are a lot of people who live right here and this is going to be their neighborhood park. And like, it's been months since I've gotten done working before it's dark. So like, the ability to go play outside when you get home is kind of amazing. I heard what Councilmember Curd said about fish. Is there a way to install directional lighting? Like, can we have something that backs up to the river and like points that way? Like, is there, okay, I I probably don't need to solve this problem right now. But like, that that was a very good point.
Yeah, I I think lighting on this project, it it's the kind of thing in design development where we do a fairly in-depth study. Because there are a lot of choices, I think, that will need to be made about. Are we lighting, you know, primary pedestrian routes and certain facilities? You know, the Central Plaza, Skate Park. Do you really need to light the inclusive play area because there are people bringing their young kids there at night? You know, there's, there's choices about what are the priorities for lighting? And, you know, do they even need to be close to the river, to your point? So I, at this point, we've held an allowance that's large. Because we know lighting is something, a program element that people wanted. But where all those lights go is something that needs a lot more study.
Perfect. Next up is, is the Lidl House some, like, is there something we need to act on? Like, is it falling apart? Like, do we have to do something with it?
I'll just jump in and say, we do, I mean, there is some deferred maintenance that that needs to be taken care of. We do have a plan for moving forward with those those repairs regardless of what we do with the building.
Yeah.
Long term. But it's it's a serviceable building at this point, other than the fact that there needs to be some upgrades to it.
I, um.
And I just add to that. I mean, the reason we were studying different options is because there's desired program within the building. That it's hard to serve within the existing footprint. So if you're trying to do both good park offices and a good community room with associated, you know, amenities. That essentially, it it wasn't fitting. We did, our architect teammate did study that. So we even, he even studied, because there is an upstairs loft space. Could we finish that out, have some desk space up there? And is there a way to insert, you know, the affordable type of elevator to make that accessible? And that, there were a lot of challenges. As you play that out. So that's where, when we started going to, well, what other opportunities are there?
I mean, for the costs associated with it, like, it would be the last thing that I would do like on this list. Like, that's just, and and honestly, I'm not sold on keeping a building from nineteen eighty four in the park. Like, if if it wasn't already there and we were doing a master plan, literally nobody would be like, hey, there's this building from nineteen eighty four. We could put here. And like, that's not a thing we would ever do if it weren't there already. And like, I don't think that what's there already should be the driving ethic behind what we do. So I I'm, I'm not sold on getting rid of it if it's a useful function right now. But if it's not a useful function, then like, it would be better to have something that is. The first thing I thought when I looked at the play beach, my kids are old enough now to where I don't necessarily have to worry about them. Like, taking a beeline straight from the play area to the water and then like worry my kids are going to die while I'm talking to a friend. But it wasn't that long ago. And it's right next to the play area and like, that's not good. So I don't, I I I'm not sold on the need for the play beach. But if we do it somewhere, like, it should be somewhere else.
I think we've heard a lot of good feedback on that one and and we know we have to revisit that one. But I do want to note that one thing we have heard about the inclusive player, and and I've heard this before on other projects I've worked for. That enclosure around it is important. So we have, we have been drawing in a fence around it and a nice one, it's going to look nice. But so because of kids that are runners and that, you know, to give.
A lot of us, a lot of us has have kids around that age. So like, you don't have to qualify the fence. Like, we get it. The, on the cost, like, would I like it to be cheaper? Yes, but building it now is the cheapest it will ever be. Like, it's not getting any cheaper. And to me, the question is, do we want a good park or a cheap park? And I want a good park. So a good park or a cheap park? For, I and I got a new term today, a destination skate park. I know what to call it now. Some of our public comment, our comment mentioned like twenty thousand feet was, or square feet was around like what you need for that. Can you tell us how much space we have allocated now for it? And also like the other elements over there, like the lawn and the pump track?
I I knew that question was going to come up once. Damn, we don't have our our sheet of takeoffs here. So what, and I think I pointed out to you that we we mix some skate skate elements within tree area. But so if you were to do all that, take out the trees, because we know they're not loved in that particular area. We were about fifteen thousand, is that right? Just under fifteen thousand. So if if we were going for twenty thousand, we would be growing, you know, either east or south.
That's my next comment. Yeah, totally. Well, when, so when I look over at that, you know, phase four, call it on the eastern side of the park. You know, nature trails and a grass lawn are great, but we have grass lawn down by the amphitheater. Like, we have the amphitheater and we have all the little like grassy spots kind of around there. I would much rather focus that area on active use. You like Leavenworth's pump track is about ten thousand square feet and they've hosted the Pump Track Worlds twice. Like, that's the kind of thing that I would like this to be able to support and bring in. And we have like all in the wetlands area that's not pictured here. Like, we have a bunch of forest walks and nature trails. And I feel like I really like the activity spaces. But like, if we, if somebody's there to use the activity spaces, those are the people I don't mind, like making them walk a little bit. And they're going to be taking a break in between sets anyway. So if we have to spread those out in some of the other little green spots. Like, to me, I would prioritize like building a like world-class skate park and pump track. And I don't really care if there is a forest walk or lawn. Because those are replicated other places in the park already. And I don't want to sacrifice, like, if we have the chance to build something really cool. Like, I would much rather build something that is world-class, that is a destination, that puts us on the map for things that we're not on the map for. And like, you know, pump tracks and skate parks, there's not a lot in like the greater Seattle area. Like, you have to go kind of a ways. Like, I think Port Angeles has a pump track, it's a Velo Solutions track, yeah. And like North Bend has one, but it's not, it's not going to host Pump Track Worlds anytime soon. So I'd, like, if we're, if we've got a chance to do something, I'd love to do something really cool. And if all we have to do is take away elements that are in the park somewhere else already, I am a-okay with that. So I guess my my guidance would be. Let's build a really good skate park and a really good pump track. Like, the kind of things that that could attract national and world level competitions.
I do want to point out that we we are in different shoreline jurisdictions. And, you know, some of our green space that we're showing, you know, lawn is not one of those examples. But some of our green space is about, you know, mitigation. And and balancing the amount of, you know, hard surfaces. So I, we will definitely be looking at the right size, but we will also be working with our consultant to make sure we're, you know, we can permit this.
Yep, totally. And and Councilmember Curd brought up, you know, shrinking parking. And if we shrink twenty parking stalls away, if we have a cool hundred and second street bridge that goes to a park and ride that already exists, that's not far away. And we take Councilmember Dodd's idea of just making sure there's ample accessible spots in there. So the people that really can't walk a block to get to the park don't have to. You know, if if we can scoot things over and create room that way. I just want to see, if we're going to build these skate park and pump track facilities, it's not a ton of extra space to do something really good. And I would love to do something really good. So however we need to do that and like however you guys can make that happen, that's what I would like to do.
Don't forget that people need to launch their boats, so they've got to be able to drive in and park and.
Oh, yeah.
Launch their boats as well.
Totally. Yeah, and vendor parking and like, like, there's, there's, there's definitely a need for access over there. But I'm, I'm just saying, if if we have to scooch things over and we can make that smaller. Like, let's just get a really good pump track and a really good skate park. And let's do something that is nationally relevant because we have the space for it. We just seems like need to prioritize it. I sort of stopped reading and just kinda went, now I'm looking back to see if I missed anything. No, I don't think I missed anything. Deputy Mayor? And we're gonna go around and if anybody like agrees with that, like, I kinda went last and I tried to like call out the good ideas that I hear. Okay, cool, awesome.
I'm last. Oh, we haven't. Yes, and something that wasn't mentioned before is a basketball court. We talked about youth activities and basketball court, I don't think would take up much space also. Uh, will be good to have, because there are a lot of skaters and we heard from a lot, uh, you know, and, uh, the, uh, the, some, you know, people like to play to skate, some wanna play basketball, you know? That would be a good thing, I think, to have also in there. I was gonna ask a question about the timeline, but I was reminded that twenty-seven is the approximate start. Because the World Cup is coming up next year and it's like if we create a mess here, it's gonna create, World Cup is gonna be, this year is gonna be very messy, because there's Club World Cup and the next year is gonna be the National Teams World Cup. So it's gonna be, uh, very interesting. As far as, uh, the cost estimate, is, is that within a plus or minus? Or is, I know it's an estimate, but what, when you go into design, what might be, uh, approximate changes? Into detailed design, I guess.
Yeah, I mean, we, we did try and hold good allowances for the things that we haven't, you know, developed in much detail. So I'd say it's a good estimate, there's certainly things that, you know, um, dependent how big that roof structure is for the skate park, that in and of itself could be a fairly expensive item. So, uh, we'd wanna get some numbers on that item. I think, uh, comments I'm generally hearing, you know, and there, and there are some different ones. Other ones aren't necessarily raising a big red flag. I mean, in general, uh, more square foot of skate park is gonna make that element larger. But we, at this point, we've just, we've held a big allowance, um, within that larger budget for that item. But, yeah.
What about the basketball idea? How much more would that, a basketball court?
I mean, a basketball court is pretty straightforward to build. I, you know, a full court footprint does take a decent amount of space, though. So I, I, we'd have to study where it would fit and how it would fit.
Because given the idea, the, the, I mean, the idea, and we can discuss it further later, to move things around, maybe that could be part of.
I would say on the basketball court, it was an idea that, that, you know, a couple people brought up, but it really did not rise to the top. We did not see a lot of people asking about a basketball court. And I think it's because there's, there are options. I mean, we have basketball courts currently in our park system, but a lot of people, they're using covered basketball courts, particularly at the schools. So if you go up to like Frank Love, for example, that's where the, the basketball, you know, sort of community is, is going and, and they're using those spaces for that. You know, basketball certainly is a, a popular sport. But again, as we did a lot of that community outreach, we didn't hear a lot about basketball, we heard about these other.
Can we, uh, talk some more about that? Because I don't know how, I mean, the demographic of people who, who were, who were talked to might have been different than demographic of people who actually have the youth who would use the basketball courts. So I think, let's, let's talk about, let's gather, uh, let's talk about the Frank Love. Because for example, I know my son, he's thirteen, he doesn't even know about Frank Love. And if there's such a basketball community at Frank Love, he would say that, take me there, you know? But he doesn't, he said, take me to YMCA. And that's not an accessible option for a lot of people also, because it costs a lot of money to be a member of the YMCA. So let's have a conversation around that. Yeah, so that's why I was asking the questions about these things. Connecting the, uh, we talked about good ideas of connecting downtown to the park. Because the, the biggest issue we have and the biggest issue, my, my, I mean, it looks awesome. I was like, I was, I was, I sent it to some friends who are not in Bothell and it's like, check it out, we're gonna have something cool. But the biggest thing I have is the, when we create that barrier, we're gonna disconnect the park further from downtown. Right now, it's, if you don't know the park is there, you're not gonna go there. So, uh, figuring out a way to have some visuals to, uh, visually connect. Because we, we know that highway right there just separates, separates it. And, and we learned the hard way that when the bridge went out, we actually separated a big part of Bothell from Bothell. So we need to have some way visually to connect the park to downtown, especially when we have those big events that happen. People should know that they have, they can go from this spot to that spot easily, you know? Uh, and I don't know, I know it's expensive to, to do above-ground, underground or some other things, any other ideas that were also discussed?
Yeah, it, I can't remember who, but someone had asked about tunneling, I think, long back, back when, thank you for the reminder. Um, and, and I say, we, we didn't ignore that question. You know, among the tunnel challenges are, there are things under the highway and, 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 um, it's, it also would have a very long length to then down, get down to that grid. It's, it is something you could certainly do, I think you're probably doubling your park cost in, um, whether it's a bridge or a tunnel, um, uh, probably the tunnel is more expensive. But, you know, I don't have engineered documents for anything like that.
I, I would say it, it's possible, anything's possible. It's just how much, you know, do you want to invest in it and what is your rate of return on that? So are people gonna use that elevated structure to get up and over? And if it in fact costs the same amount to develop the park and then you double it to put that one structure in, how many people are gonna actually use it? So those are all things that we'd have to like talk about. It's really more of, you know, if you think about it from a phasing standpoint, it's, it involves more than just the park. It involves connectivity, it involves transportation, it would have to be a much larger conversation than just the parks project.
I, I agree, um, it is a interconnected system. But if we don't have the conversation now, when things are being planned in the future, like lot EFG, for example, in eight years or whenever it's done, or when the new bridge happens, one oh two bridge, and we don't have the conversations now about connecting the park to downtown, then we're not gonna be.
And, and we've had, we, we are having those conversations. So it's not lost on, on the conversation, it's just the bigger picture of, you know, what this actually looks like if we're to do that. And in our conversations with our transportation professionals, they weren't really excited about that idea for a number of reasons. And they could probably explain it better than I can, but, um, they didn't think it would be very effective.
As we, as we're approaching, coming up on two hours, I wanna double check on the feedback of what you're looking forward to. So I know with this being conceptual design, certainly it's a matter of, again, further design. I think the bridge is a good example of that of, I'm assuming in this of, because we, it's been a theme that we've heard about, that part of the conceptual design is, if in the future, if there was gonna be a crossing, how could we accommodate? Like, let's not put something that can't accommodate it. Is that, I don't usually ask questions, but that was something I was curious about too. And so, so that's an assumption we should make, is that as this moves forward, the design will make some assumptions like, we might have four or five phases here, but there could be future phases and how do we think about? Okay.
Yeah, the Lidl House, I have no opinion, I mean, whatever is best, I'll go with, uh, with, uh, with the group. Time, I had the question, yeah, what's the, yeah, that's it, thank you.
Okay, I'm jumping back in, um, because I knew this crowd would have good ideas. So, and now I can't read minutes. I, yeah, it, it is, it is late. Um, I do wanna make sure, I don't wanna have like a, like a token and sort of not very meaningful tribute to our tribal nations. I also do, we do very much center like, like a settlement era at the historical museum. And that has, has not changed a lot in the time that I've been going to the museum. So whatever we can do in the park to both, I, I'm not gonna say it as good as Councilmember Curd, but just to honor the, the goals of preserving the environment and, and, and strengthening it, that our tribal nations do fight for. And also, um, what we can put in the park to kind of add more history. I was thinking that the forest walk, then I also liked what the mayor said about, hey, if we're gonna do a skate park and a pump track, like, do a really good one. And, you know, because I do think that things like the lawn with the shelter, like, we want some shelter for people that are using those facilities. But we have a lot of parks with a lot of big places too. And I, and I hate to disagree with, um, the deputy mayor, because I love a good basketball game. But we have a lot of school, schools are parks in a lot of our city. And they have basketball courts outside that are accessible most of the time.
Schools don't allow us to go play.
They, they do. Yeah, there, it depends on the school, but Shelton View, Frank Love, and I realize this is my part of Bothell, not your part of Bothell, because it's so big, we can't keep track of it. But, uh, it's interesting, and then I think the cover becomes important. I, I don't know that this is the park where I would push for a basketball court so much. Because it also, it's doing a lot. Like, it reminds me of trying to design my home office, which was gonna be a home office, a TV place, a place to store my brother's thousand VHS tapes, place for my kid to do homework, a place to store three bikes, it's, it's a lot. And it can't be everything. So I, I don't want you guys to have this like crazy list to try and satisfy. Because I think you also have a council that just doesn't see a lot of new parks. And now we're kinda working on two and we're like, ah! So I, I do agree with though, what we do, we should do it well. I'm super excited about the inclusive play area, the Amanda from seven years ago heard about the fence and is overjoyed, because I had a runner. Now he does listen, but he was a runner as a toddler. And I think that's all good, but yeah, what we, what we do include should be good. And it's hard for me to, to think of Bothell, my tiny hometown, which is much bigger now, but as like having a world-class anything, but like, what an amazing thing, you know? And it's very true that things like the skate park and the pump track, and honestly, even the inclusive play area, like, going to a park with a fence, I would go to, uh, Tambarck Park in unincorporated Snohomish County when my son was little, because it had the fence. And so we do still have to travel for a lot of the stuff and it would be right here, which is cool. So, um, I just wanna add the caveat that like, we don't wanna jeopardize the stream and the salmon and all that stuff. Because we, a lot of our other work speaks to those goals, so, um, I appreciated those notes a lot. The other thing with the Lidl House and like raising it, I, uh, Jenny had mentioned another building where they dug out the basement. And I know the building, um, there's a building on Main Street where that was also done. But I'm thinking about actually the Islamic Center of Bothell, which used to be the Montevilla Farmhouse. Um, and I knew it as the farmhouse and then I got a tour, um, recently of the Islamic Center of Bothell. And that seemed like a mammoth thing to raise it and add another story. Like, I would just really hesitate to get into that. So I, I agree with the thought that, that perhaps the historical value is gone. And I just wouldn't want us to get so caught up in preserving this building that's circa nineteen eighty-four and earlier. And like spend so much money doing this crazy thing of like lifting it, like, it just seems like, uh, moving buildings seems like a big thing to me. Because then it's like, what's under the building? What's, you know, you see a lot more of the building than, it's like when you start a small renovation, you're like, oh, what's in my walls now? It just makes me nervous. So that's, I think I hit everything. And then, yeah, with the, with the parking too, like, what a great opportunity to have that park and ride, where you can then walk across the bridge and hopefully, you know, we come up with cool guided ways to say, hey, did you not find a spot here? Because there's a ton of parking down here and you can walk right across the bridge and avoid crossing the highway. And I think that's such a great option. And as we look at replacing the bridge eventually, it will reopen as is and then eventually be, you know, a new bridge. Like, ways we can kinda tie people into that seem so cool. So I hope, it, it sounds like we're taking advantage of that, which is really, really neat. Because we talked about something over the highway, we literally already have a bridge over the highway. So like, what a cool opportunity. I think that's everything and it's like.
Just quickly jumping in here, um, I love the idea of rightsizing the, you know, and, and creating a very attractive, uh, destination for, uh, the skate park and a pump track. I worry about it being so denuded that it loses its softness and its lushness. I mean, when I look at that, I see something that probably functions as a bioswale for, for the activity itself and for the, anything that comes off the highway. And so I really hesitate on, you know, completely eliminating lawns unless if that becomes a, another forested area. You know, maybe turning that lawn area into a forested area to allow things to move out would be, I don't know. This is your day job, it's not my day job, I'm not gonna tell you how to do it. But, um, but, um, I do, I know that you're very cognizant of shoreline. And so anything that we can, um, double the function of aesthetics and the biology of it, I don't wanna tread on that at all, that was the only thing that I want. And the, and Lidl House, I think someone made a comment of making it look period. You could do, or you could do a longhouse or, I mean, something that would, would not look sterile. What, I mean, if you, if you, if you remove Lidl House, make sure it's a welcoming building that's, that's not sterile. So that's my only request.
I'd love to circle back, um, just to sort of highlight some of what I've heard here. I agree that helping people connect to the parking that we have at the park and ride and the pedestrian bridge over a hundred and second, um, makes a lot of sense. And I think Amanda said it most clearly, the, um, just having sign, like, good signage, like in wayfinding, so that people know how to get to the park and how to get to parking. I think is, that's just gonna be really important. There is a little teeny tiny part of me that wonders what happens when the property owner there sells the, of the, the medical supply store or whatever.
Yeah, like, I understand they are interested in selling, oh, okay, sorry.
And just how that might someday become, like, it wouldn't be the first time that the city of Bothell had purchased land from private owners. And it could have, I, I just say that possibly that would help with wayfinding in the future. We will wait for another agenda, um, for that. And, um, so just wayfinding, I think, is important. Um, and then back to the, yes, with tribes. I just recently learned that we have a public art map on the city of Bothell website, um, a walking tour of public art. And, and I very much would one day like to see indigenous artists being featured in our public art. And I think that this is the park, like Wayne especially is another area. But, um, we have opportunities to, to celebrate indigenous artists in this park, since we're working on it now. But we will have the opportunity with Wayne as well. And, and it makes total sense to me that if we're going to feature public art anywhere, that should be both indigenous and it should be in this park. Um, as just a way to like, and I realize we need to build relationships with our, our local federally recognized tribes, um, as well. And like learn how to, how to work together, um, like government to government. And then I really just like the idea of like, whatever Lidl House will be in the future, it needs to have a clear purpose. And I don't think we're clear on what the purpose of it is, so we don't actually know what we wanna do with it. So like, the chicken or the egg there is the purpose. So I, it's, well, I'm not answering that question, but like, we need to start with the purpose. And, so yeah, that's, that's all I have. But, um, thanks, thanks for everybody just sharing their thoughts and I think there's a lot of wisdom around this table. Um, and I really appreciate how heard we are, like, you guys are really hearing our community and, and helping us shape something. I think, like, you hear the support for us to move forward and to come to a final design. And so I think this is sort of just like last, last chance, like, what do we need to communicate to represent our community? And so thank you for hearing us.
So with that, I wanna, I wanna say thank you, we had some really, really good feedback. And I think it's gonna really help inform as we, um, look to go to our next steps. Uh, our next steps do include going to, um, scoping out what our, our next process is, which is design of the, the park. So we'll be, um, touching bases with you again as we put that together and that should be, happen relatively quick here, so.
I'm gonna be, can I say again, when we get to further step. Can I say again, when we get to further steps and we talk about twenty-nine million dollars, again, appreciate the note that it's cheaper than City Hall. Can we get really clear ideas of the types of fundraising that can be done, the types of donations that can be accepted so that we have guidelines to work in? Cause I, I do get approached by community members who want to know that. And, and I think that's gonna be hopefully a way to help make this happen.
So we have, we do have a donation policy coming before council in the next month or so. And then, um, also, you know, we're gonna be starting our pros plan. So it will help inform a lot of these things. One that just came to mind was the Lidle House and sort of what the purpose of that could be. And also think about how could we potentially fund, you know, these large projects that the community wants to see built. So it helpful, you know, hopefully help inform that conversation as well.
Awesome.
I have just a couple of quick things, um, that came up as I was listening to the other folks. I was thinking if we want to keep the lawn and create space for the destination skate park and pump track. We could move the lawn to where the Lidle House is right now. And shape it a little bit. And I mean, so like I would be comfortable with that. And, and honestly, this isn't gonna probably make me popular. But if I had to choose between any of the historic buildings and active recreation for our community, I would choose the active recreation. Like we're building a park for the next hundred years. And I would much rather have places for kids to play for the next hundred years than hundred-year-old buildings. So if, if we run into space constraints, um, I would be, I would be comfortable repurposing those for active recreation. Specifically the destination pump track and skate park.
You know, I have to say though, those, some of the, I know they're not as old as other places in the world, but they are pretty cool to go take a look at.
I agree. Like I, I'm not saying I don't like them. Like it's just that the choice isn't between something we like and something we don't like. It's something we like and something we might like a little more.
Just to be clear, the, the other three historic buildings, I, I think it would be.
Are they, are they landmarked?
They are all landmarked and very, and they are very good examples of the period that have not had like nineteen eighty-four additions to them.
Yeah.
The, so, uh, that would be quite the battle at the landmarks board. But yeah. And, and we did actually hear from quite a lot of people and, and not just the people within the, um, the historical society. That, that did value having those.
I like them there, to be clear. Like I am not saying I want to get rid of them. But just like, let's figure out how to get the cool stuff without getting rid of those then. All right. I think we're adjourned.